Mayor Danner, the public has been admitted.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Seisler. I call to order this meeting of the city council for the city of Gross Point Park. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, I thought I had technical difficulties again. Okay, Councilmember Rayland.
Present.
Reed.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Hodges.
Here.
Robson.
Here.
Fluit.
Here.
And Mayor Danner.
Here, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic.
To the republic. For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Councilmember Rowland is already having connection problems, so if the administration can stand by to help him out. Council, the first item of business is approval of the consent agenda. You have had the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Sir, support?
Or?
Please call the roll. Clerk Blayhut? Uh-oh. We seem to have lost Clerk Blayhut, too.
All right, I'll call the roll for this time by screen. Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Robson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Fluit?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. Consent agenda is approved.
I'll say yes as well. I think you skipped.
Good, oh, you're here. Thank you, that's unanimous, we got everybody.
It's understandable.
Councilwoman Rowland, you were gone for a short while, but you have returned.
Thank you.
Next item of business is public comment agenda items. And I'll ask the city manager to administer this portion of the agenda.
Mayor Danner, I have two written public comments that I'll read. This first comment comes from John over in Yorkshire in Gross Point Park. "I want to address proposed ordinance 226. I was in the process of replacing my driveway, having already hired a contractor, within days of starting when I became aware of this ordinance. The existing driveway has a catch basin presumably connecting to the sanitary. After contacting the city, a representative from Public Works came out to inspect it and advised that it would be considered illegal. He also advised that considering all the recent flooding, it was highly unlikely that any exemptions would be granted. He offered suggestions on how to comply with 226, none of which were inexpensive. I contacted my contractor and was told that the least expensive solution would work, but probably freeze in the winter. The only true solution is to connect the drain line to the storm sewer, which would cost many thousands of dollars. We came up with a less expensive solution, which will still likely freeze in the winter, but will enable connecting the storm sewer in the future without tearing out the new driveway. This is costing me about $4,000 now, and many more thousand should it need to be connected to the storm. Is the city going to reimburse residents who need to comply with 226 through no fault of their own? This proposed ordinance is an unnecessary reaction to the recent flooding, which was most likely caused by equipment failure and/or human error. Residents should not be penalized for this." Next comment comes from Mr. Greg Donnelly. "I comment on agenda items 11, 4, and 5 needed to make way for the construction of the new DPW building on Mac. First, I'd like to express that it's important this vote happens before construction in the DPW starts because of the requirement of the city's charter. Second, I would like to commend the successful efforts to obtain an easement from Huntington Bank for pedestrian walkway up to Mac. It's important for pedestrians to be able to take this route, though I am a strong proponent of the fact that this is best achieved by simply reopening the street. Finally, I think this resolutions in front of you today are misleading and should not be approved for the following reasons. Number one, there is in fact public traffic from Wayburn Street that uses the alley in an old parking lot to get to Mac. The path for residents to Mac and their garages will become much less convenient due to this development, and the city has not offered plans to address this. Number two, there will be a much greater financial impact in the 2500 suggested for legal fees for the easement from Huntington Bank. The design and construction of the sidewalk will cost far more and have an impact on the site plan for the DPW. But neither of these have been presented. In addition, the bank's approval suggested be contingent on vacating Wayburn. Why?" Mayor Danner, those are the written public comments. Then I'll ask if there's any spoken public comment from the public. If you could raise your hand. Mayor Danner, seeing none, we have no further public comment.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. With that, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. I'm going to do things just slightly out of order and move to the resolution honoring Olympian Katie DeLuft. And so if you would admit the DeLuft family. And there, there we are.
Hello.
And I'll and I'll get going here. Clearly, Katie DeLuft has accomplished a great deal in her athletic career as a competitive swimmer from way back when she started competitive swimming to the pinnacle just recently at the Olympic Games. So I will read the resolution that I propose to adopt tonight, and then I'll entertain council comment. Resolution honoring Katie DeLuft, four-by-100 meter freestyle relay. Olympian bronze medalist, Olympic Games Tokyo. Whereas Katie DeLuft is a competitive swimmer who represented the United States internationally. Katie qualified for the 2021 Olympic team in the four-by-100 freestyle relay. Katie is a lifelong Gross Point Park resident. She attended Gross Point South and University of Michigan. Whereas Katie swam all four years in high school and was the most valuable swimmer of the year recipient. Whereas Katie was a nine-time CSCA All-American, five-time Big Ten champion, and three-time All-Big Ten selection. Katie garnered All-American titles with the Wolverines, 200-yard freestyle relay, 400-yard freestyle relay, and 800-yard freestyle relay. Katie had her best year in the last year at Michigan. At the Big Ten Championships, she placed second in the 50-yard freestyle, 100-yard freestyle, and 200-yard freestyle. She was also a three-time Big Ten champion in the 200-yard freestyle relay, 400-yard freestyle relay, and 800-yard freestyle relay. At the NCAA Championship, she finished sixth in 200-yard freestyle, eighth in 100-yard freestyle, and tenth in 50-yard freestyle. In total, she earned six All-American honors in the 100-yard freestyle, 200-yard freestyle, 200-yard freestyle relay, 400-yard freestyle relay, 800-yard freestyle relay, and 200-yard medley relay. Whereas at Nationals at Irvine, Katie finished 12th in 50 freestyle and 100 freestyle, and 21st in the 200 freestyle. Her finish in the 100 freestyle qualified her for the 2019 World University Games in Naples, Italy. Whereas in those games, in the women's four-by-100 freestyle relay, Katie was part of the USA gold medal team, swimming the third leg and handing off to her sister Gabby, who completed the victory. Whereas in the Tokyo Olympics, Katie swam for the US team in the four-by-100 freestyle relay semifinal, helping put the team into the final competition where they won the bronze medal. Now therefore, be it resolved, Mayor Danner and members of council acknowledge and honor Katie DeLuft for her many accomplishments, particularly her role in achieving an Olympic medal for the United States Swimming Team. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Moved.
Moved.
I believe Councilmember Hodges and Councilmember Reed were the movers and secuers, but I'm not sure in what order.
It's like a freestyle race.
A relay.
Please, please call the roll.
Jane?
Okay, Clerk Blayhut's having difficulty, we're relying on the city manager.
Okay, Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Robson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Fluit?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. This resolution will be finalized, signed, and put in a frame to be presented to Katie. So, that's terrific. Council, yeah, I'll take that. Council, do you have any comments? We'll start with Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Katie, we're a swim family here, and we followed your career since at least high school, and I think even before that, back on the mutants. It's impressive, we followed you on your path to the Olympics, including making sure we set our alarm to watch you at the Olympic Trials, and of course, the meets in Japan. And we're just so proud of you, we're proud of the way you represent our city, our state, and our country. And we're thrilled to have our very own Olympian, homegrown Gross Point Park resident. And I know that we probably haven't heard the last of you, and I look forward to seeing what's next. So, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for entertaining us and thrilling us with your swim career to date. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hodges, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been such a pleasure working with the DeLuft family the last few weeks. And your agent Katie, he's been great, making sure we crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is, and certainly members of the community who are so excited about acknowledging you today and giving you the proper due, both with the quickly put-together parade as well as this evening. And I will say now, when I hear that word, "DeLuft", it evokes three things for me. One is accomplishment and aspiration, because my goodness, you have knocked it out of the park in that regard. Although I'm a little concerned about the number of red lights and stop signs you ran that could hurt your record in the parade. And then certainly family, in fact, we should acknowledge your parents who are on camera, too. Richard and Patty DeLuft. It's so wonderful to see what you've built in these four lovely daughters of yours who support each other so much and are all equally accomplished. And you certainly deserve recognition as well, because I'm sure there were many early mornings and car rides to and from the pool. And then thirdly, that DeLuft name connotes community for me, because we simply adore you and are so proud and grateful for the role models that you are. My daughters, too, were mutants during the DeLuft era. And by the way, congratulations to our mutants this year. They won the championship, which is outstanding. And we all knew to clamor to the pool side when a DeLuft was in the pool. And we really enjoyed the paper plate portion of the season, which I'm sure you have quite a collection of. And so I thought today, in addition to this resolution, we should graduate you to a paper platter, because it's much bigger than a paper plate, right? So I made one for you, and it says, "DeLuft, DeLuft, DeLuft is on fire." And I'll make sure this gets delivered to you. But I'm sure you will continue shining and just making this community and your family so proud of you. So thank you for tonight and being here with us and allowing us to share in your glow.
Thank you. Councilmember McConnell?
Good evening, and congratulations, Katie, on becoming an Olympic medalist. I can, my relay experience is not swim-related, it's track-related. So, and I didn't, certainly didn't get to the status that you achieved. So, I can only imagine the hours and dedication it took. So, I hope you appreciate that and soak that in as well as your parents. So, thank you for representing us well, and congratulations.
Okay, anybody else? Councilwoman Rowland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Katie and Gabby, congratulations. I just want to give you guys a high five. It's pretty impressive. And Mr. and Mrs. DeLuft as well, and the other two sisters that aren't here right now. We all understand it takes a village to get to the top. So congratulations to all of your family. We here on council are volunteers for our city and represent our city. You guys got to represent our country. That is something that they can't take away from you, and something you should be very proud of. So, and I'm very proud of you guys as well. I'm sorry we weren't able to make the parade. We saw you guys depart from the park, because we were walking our dogs. We weren't aware it was going on. So, I'm glad we were able to catch the beginning of it. And once again, congratulations, it's really nice to see you guys and be a part of this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Protem Robson?
Thank you, Mayor. Katie, again, congratulations. You've done us all proud. You're such a great role model, you and your sisters. In fact, what I'm going to do is take your autographed copy, photograph. I'm going to mail it to my granddaughter down in Lake Great Texas, because you and your sisters are such great role models. And thank you very much for all that you do, I wish you well in the future. And if you would, say hi to Uncle Jimmy for me. Uncle Jimmy's a good friend of mine, I worked with him in the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. And I feel I know you before the Olympics, because every time, seriously, when I sat down with him, he'd show me pictures of his nieces, he was so proud of them. So I knew, even before then, I knew you went. Thanks again.
Thank you, Councilmember Fluit.
I'm just going to be repetitive, but of course, I do want to jump in and congratulate you and your sisters as well. You're all very impressive. At my age and from my point of view, I'm particularly excited for your parents, because I know your parents are very proud of you as well. You're an amazing family, and I'm glad you could be here tonight, and I'm glad that we had the opportunity to recognize you.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, because the sentiments that I would express were expressed by my colleagues. It's a terrific accomplishment, and it's really for the whole family. This is a rare situation, I think, where you've got such an accomplished group of siblings, and I'm sure the whole family is proud of your accomplishments as well. And I know it's a family effort to support this kind of competitive achievement. In our family, we have nothing to compare to yours, but the closest I get is being closely involved with travel hockey, which became pretty much a daily affair for our family. I can only imagine with four competitive swimmers what that must be like for the family. So congratulations. And it's exciting for me as a grandfather, in that I've got two grandsons who are mutants right now. And they had a blast when they won this year and got to jump in the pool. So, I don't think they're going to get as far as you did, but it certainly is an inspiration to them and all the kids in Gross Point Park who are competitive swimmers. So congratulations again. And you have, you're not required to say anything, but if you would like to say something, the floor is yours.
Well, I can imagine that hockey is a little bit more entertaining than swimming, but thank you for all of your guys' support and everything that you've done for me and my family truly means a lot. And I don't think I can express how grateful we are for everything that you've done for us. And this medal was for like the community and my family as well. So thank you for everything.
Well, thank you, and congratulations. I know you're, I believe you're still far away. And if you're, and I believe that it may be the middle of, or becoming the middle of the night for you. So, I will, I'll let you go. If anybody else has got anything, I think that, I think that's it. But it's just a wonderful time, and we can celebrate this kind of accomplishment for we take it very personally. We think of you as, you know, a key member now of the Gross Point Park community. You're part of the family, and to have part of the family achieve what you did at the Olympics is incredible. So, thanks a lot for all your efforts, and congratulations again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, you guys are free to leave. I'm sure the rest of the agenda is not going to be nearly as much fun as this one was, this agenda item. So, thanks a lot for coming by to join us tonight.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Okay, and the next, moving along, the next item of business is the manager's report. And I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Danner, and members of city council and the public. So, I'll give a brief update on some activities from the city, and some of these may be a little repetitive in the rest of our agenda tonight. Wayne County, the American Rescue Plan funding, the city has sent in a grant application for Wayne County consideration of a $1.7 million for the CCTV sewer program. We're hoping for an expected announcement sometime soon from Wayne County. And this is the pool of money that Wayne County received from American Rescue Plan, which is about $550 million that will be allocated to those communities for certain projects and such. SEMCOG, the city is in pursuit of a grant for green infrastructure in Gross Point Park right now. And we're pursuing, looking into, you know, something in our streetscape or in our city easements regarding bioswales, particularly in the West Park District of Gross Point Park. FEMA Hazard Grant, with council's approval of the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan tonight, the city could pursue funding from FEMA for flooding and storm event management. There's approximately $51 million available in funding provided that was allocated to the state of Michigan. Road paving, you may have noticed that Cadillac asphalt is in Gross Point Park right now, and they started their paving last week with the help of city engineer, OHM advisors. The following streets are being worked on right now, Nottingham, Somerset, Park Lane, St. Paul, and Fairfax. And the city's in review of pricing for alley paving this year, as well as consideration of sewer work to separate alleys before they are paved. Just as a gentle reminder, for the Small Business Administration and your FEMA applications, the filing deadline to return applications for physical property damage is September 13, 2021. DTE, DT had been working on tree trimming and starting their 48-kV upgrade. This is pole and fiberglass arm replacements within Gross Point Park. However, this was delayed after the storms that rocked the southeast Michigan area, leaving about 800,000 without power. For, in some areas, about a week and a half, or in our community, we had several streets that were without power for over a week, for almost a week. The 48-kV program is part of DT's effort to upgrade pole infrastructure and increase their tree line clearance. We will have recycling consideration for you tonight in the council packet, which will be for an extension of Green for Life Services. You may have noticed the city hall building is in progress right now with the roof tear-off and replace. We have the pump station completed right now. They're almost done with the public safety building, and they're working on city hall right now, and next will be windows. Applicate, we're still accepting applications at this time until it's filled for the Tifa DDA director. That position is available on the city website, Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Downtown Association, to any of those that might be interested or know somebody that might want to apply. The city communicator is in production and should be expected to hit home soon. Sections dedicated to storm activity, FEMA, and SBA information for residents. Meetings regarding sewer work in Gross Point Park. So, I'll touch on these a little bit. The city has met, and I won't touch too much, because Sue will be next, but we've met with Great Lakes Water Authority, and she'll be able to discuss that further. The city has met with Eagle regarding a checklist and actions we're willing to take in pursuit of the outfall, which is the EERV, Extreme Emergency Release Valve. The Gross Points in Jefferson East, we were able to get a meeting together working with the community organization at looking at a eastside sewer management district. Right now, we are part of a management district with Clinton River, and we're seeing that if there's an opportunity of the Gross Points, city of Detroit and Jefferson East, that we can create a more concentrated area within the Detroit River and Lake St. Clair. Wayne County, we're in pursuit of a meeting with them right now regarding their lines. However, we had to request FOIA information to obtain information from them. City of Detroit, we're working on logistics right now on a meeting with the Detroit Water and Sewer Department. And with the Gross Point School District, we met with the superintendent and the ground staff to discuss suspected areas of potential infiltration and areas that we can improve upon at Trembling, Pearson, DeFur schools here in Gross Point Park. Mayor Danner and council, that's my manager's report for you.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Fluit?
Thanks, just a couple of quick things. I had noticed, I think, a couple of times you had indicated the posting for Assistant City Manager slash Public Service, and I was wondering why it was phrased that way. What exactly does Assistant City Manager slash Public Service mean?
Okay, so Assistant City Manager slash Public Service, this would be the extension of my office, which would be handling day-to-day operations within Gross Point Park and certain special projects. The public service aspect of this is actually something that we used to have about 30 years ago, upon discovery, talking with Clerk Blayhut. So what this person would be handling as well is more concentrated within the Public Works section, Building Department, Code Enforcement, and Planning. This is something that, you know, reviewing what we're working on right now, I believe it's an opportunity for a professional that wants to come into Gross Point Park that they can really work on, you know, a bunch of areas within the city, and as well as the amount of infrastructure work that we're having in Gross Point Park. I believe somebody with that background in the public service would be essential to Gross Point Park.
Okay, okay, and then my other question was, the posting that you put out for a DDA and Tifa director, have you touched base with some of the people on our planning commission that might be able to reach out to some of their contacts? I know we have a couple of people who are really involved in that, in that field, and they might be able to push some people in our direction.
I can certainly pass it along.
Okay, that was all I had, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Danner. City manager, that probably, one of the biggest complaints I've had since our last meeting is the DTE issue. So it's also along the lines of the infrastructure that we're experiencing failures with our infrastructure. But the DTE issue, that has been, the power outages in the park have been an ongoing issue for many years, particularly below Jefferson. But a number of residents, not Audubon and Grayton area, were without power for a week. And I know, you know, including, including our mayor. So, you know, other cities in the region have been calling on DTE to work on their infrastructure. Infrastructure line clearing is one of the big items. I know the governor has as well. Obviously, we don't have any authority over them. They did occupy our city for quite some time, and we've always been cooperative. So, you know, you know, especially in the summer, in the heat and the humidity, residents are without power, that's, you know, that's a major issue. So let's, you know, whatever, whatever we can do to elevate that with DTE, let's do that, because that's been a real problem.
Okay, thank you. I think that I think that's an area clearly administration has been pursuing with DTE, along with other parts of their responsibility. Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to echo the concerns that Councilmember Reed expressed about DTE, particularly when you're talking about eight and a half days without power. It's not good. I did afford the concern, but, and I guess it's kind of a mixed message in terms of whether they were addressed or not. So, anything you can do on that, I'm happy to forward that to you, City Manager Seisler. Just a question on the paving. And I know, you know, more homework needs to be done, but is there any consideration or opportunity for permeable pavement with those projects? Or is that too cost prohibitive, or is it too late to look at that?
It's, it's very cost prohibitive, and I can actually have our city engineer discuss that as well. It's something that, as we're pursuing, you know, street repaving, it would be an insurmountable cost for that area. However, there might be an opportunity within green infrastructure grants down the road in regards to maybe a certain area of a parking lot, or it could be an alley. And so those are things we're looking at, but I'll let Patrick maybe enlighten us a little bit.
Thank you, Manager Seisler. I would concur with what you said exactly. It is a fairly expensive technology, but we have seen in the southeast Michigan area some pretty reliable installations of permeable pavements, specifically more in the, their actual pavers that we see. And a lot of times, those get used on more residential streets. Manager Seisler talked about future grants that we're looking at. Those are definite technologies that we would consider in that. The other part of it is, when we look at areas where it might make sense to try to reduce the burden of impervious surfaces on the sewer system, and I say sewer, I mean the storm sewer system in this case, that might be a technology that we can use. And that'll be part of capital improvement planning over the future. If there's areas that make sense to have that planned out, so we don't go in and repave a road, that might make sense to do that in later, later phases. that might make sense to do that in later, later phases. So um definitely something that's going to be in the toolbox moving forward. Um but at this point in time, a little too late to add that in, uh because really what's being done right now is um we kind of call maintenance overlay, where we take off existing asphalt and pave it back.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Uh Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh city manager Seisler, I was wondering if there's any uh next steps that have been occurring with the master plan, any kind of update you can share with us?
Uh so I know the MKSK is still working on that master plan right now, and we're expected to have an update at our next planning commission meeting. I believe that we'll probably have that taking place in sometime in September. Okay, so there should be a further update then.
Cool, thanks so much.
Okay, I think that's it. Uh thank you, city manager, for your report and for council's questions. Uh moving right along, uh next item on the agenda is Great Lakes Water Authority and interim CEO Suzanne Coffey and her team, and I will uh have the city manager introduce Suzanne and her team.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Denner. So uh with us tonight, I'd really like to thank Suzanne Coffey, interim CEO with uh Great Lakes Water Authority for joining us. Uh their chief engineer, Navid, and Michelle as well um from Great Lakes Water. So um uh thank you guys for coming tonight. Um I'll keep this brief, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you, city council members, Mayor Denner and City Manager Seisler for inviting us to be here at this meeting. Uh the Great Lakes Water Authority's Board of Directors appointed me as the interim chief executive officer on August eleventh. And as the newly appointed interim CEO, I'm glad that I could be here tonight to introduce myself to you and to provide you with an update of our systems operations. I'm a licensed professional engineer who has deep roots in Southeast Michigan. I've worked in the region and the water sector since two thousand and three, including a long stint with the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office. Uh I have an awful lot of sewer and wastewater experience in that regard. I came to work with DWSD in two thousand and fifteen and was part of the executive team that stood up GLWA in two thousand and sixteen, serving as the chief planning officer until my recent position changed. Let me start by sharing with you that the regional system is operating as it was designed. The men and women who work for GLWA are committed to serving you and our other member partners' communities at the service levels that you expect and that you deserve. I also want to let you know that I'm committed to working with the team at GLWA, as well as with our member partners and regulators to improve the overall system resiliency. This includes better coordination with our fellow utilities, including our external power suppliers. In fact, since the June rain events, we have been in a meeting regularly with them, and just this afternoon, I participated in a meeting with the executive staff from DTE Energy to advance the dialogue about short and long-term improvements to the reliability of our power supply. We've had detailed discussions with member partners. Uh city manager Seisler and I have spoken many times about the ideas and the concepts that we need to move forward in advance to be able to meet the expected level of service from a flooding perspective. We've been highly engaged in the new Southeast Michigan Aging Infrastructure Group that was recently established by the state of Michigan. That group meets on a weekly basis to understand what we can do collaboratively to help address the critical issues of flooding in Southeast Michigan. Our regional watershed hub, this is a work group that we sponsor, is meeting this week, and in that meeting, or that meeting, we will begin talking about what the level of service should be for the region as it relates to flood management. The region continues to have discussions about these rain events, as they should, and we are seeing recognition that the level of service that the system provides for environmental protection is likely different than the level of protection that's needed for flood control. Up to this point, we've been talking about a single level of service for a combined system. It's becoming obvious that we can no, can no longer do that. We need to set our sights on different design targets. This is the right conversation, and it's a conversation that we all need to be a part of. Uh GLWA is an important part of that uh conversation, a big piece of that puzzle, but we're not the only piece of the puzzle. The local systems that convey flow to us need to be involved in the conversations, such as the conversations we've been having with your city manager and other member partners, but also the road agencies and our regulators. So it's a regional discussion. And I'm happy to see that the region is beginning to pivot toward talking about flood control uh and not solely talking about environmental protection, although environmental protection is and always will be very important to us. Before I open questions from this honorable body, I wanted to share an update with you on the two investigations that are currently underway and to GLWA's operational response to the June twenty-fifth and twenty-six rain events. First, there's an internal investigation. It's staff-led. This investigation's been underway since shortly after the June event, and is moving along at a good pace. You should know that this type of after-action report is conducted after any major incident, and it includes work not only with consultants, but with our member partners as well. Second is the independent investigation being conducted by GLWA's Board of Directors to ensure uh full transparency and hopefully trust in their findings and outcomes. An ad hoc committee of our Board of Directors has hired attorney Jeffrey Collins to run that investigation, that independent investigation, as well as uh two highly regarded engineering firms to conduct the technical elements of the, of the, of the analysis and our response. Uh we expect both of these investigations to conclude in sixty to ninety days. Uh and they are detailed in nature, and as I said, they are moving along at a swift pace. Uh both GLWA staff and the board's consultants have committed to providing periodic updates to our board uh in in the board's public meetings, the regular public meetings we have. I'm here tonight uh as City Manager Seifman indicated with our chief operating officer for wastewater, Naveed Muram. He's also a registered professional engineer, uh and we're here and happy to answer questions that you may have of us.
Okay, uh thank you. Uh before we get into questions, I just want to uh remind council that uh much as we are uh given the the lawsuits that are out there, the emphasis really uh needs to be as it is in our discussions as well, and and in uh Suzanne's comments on on actions that are going on now and forward-looking uh improvements. So I'd ask you to uh to kind of focus in those areas. With that uh, with that uh comment, I'll go to Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, and thank you um Miss Coffey and Mr. Merrim. Did I get that right, for coming um and presenting to us? Uh you know, we're, we're still reeling from the, the damage that we had here in our city. It was overwhelming. It affected the majority of the homes. And you know, we're doing, we, we are, as a council, acting um within our system. And we have our, our engineer here, but a lot of the questions I have from residents pertain to GLEWA. So um uh there are many, but I I tried to reduce it to two questions, at least I'm, I'm sure there'll be some from others, but um one is, what are you doing to address your capacity issues? Because um you know, we're going to have another storm event. In fact, we had a major storm event in September, September of twenty sixteen that affected uh you know, many homes here, not nearly as many, but so you know, we get a lot of rain in the fall, so we want to know um that's what residents are asking. What are, what is GLEWA doing to address the capacity issues? And then sort of to piggyback on that, um based on presentations by our engineers, what are you doing to address the combined systems in Oakland and McComb County that flow this way? We're sort of at the bottom of the, of the, the funnel, so to speak. So um those are sort of my two main questions, and I'm, I'm sure there'll be others from other council members.
So thank you. Let me, let me take a stab at that. In terms of what are we doing to address capacities, there's a couple of things. Number one, our equipment needs to function reliably, consistently. Absolutely. So that's number one, right? We want to make sure that we are providing the capacity that is available at all times. And so to do that, we want to make sure that we have a reliable energy source, that we have uh reliability in our pumping systems, and doing regular cleaning and rehabilitation of our sewer systems. Those, those are the things that will really get to capacity. Uh in terms of a future capacity and future capacity needs, that's that conversation that we need to have. If we have to increase our design targets to a larger event, then that's what we're going to need to do to meet the demand. We haven't yet settled there. Um but I feel like that's the direction we're heading, that the public is not comfortable with the level of service that the current system provides, and that we're going to have to increase that. In terms of conveyance, that means as we, as we build new pipes, we probably need to build them bigger. As we rehabilitate the fruit and counter pump stations, we're taking into consideration the rain event that we just had to see if we need to do something different or more pump stations. That's about the planning. Uh one of the best things uh that we have to pivot from at this moment is that we recently updated our wastewater master plan. We recently updated our modeling, and we recently worked together with the region to talk about how we want that wastewater system to function. So we're poised and ready to have that conversation. If um communities want to have more capacity in the system, we can talk about that, what that might look like. Uh I can't tell you that we can snap our fingers and change our capacities. When we build assets, we build them for seventy-five, a hundred-year useful life. Right? And, and but, but what that really means is we can't afford not to look at a hundred years south. Right? We have to look at that because what we build today will be in the hands of someone in fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years, and they'll be saying, is it the right amount? Uh a flow through the system. So we're, we're absolutely working on resiliency right now, as, as I alluded to, we're talking and and regular basis, consistent basis with our energy supplier, but we're also opening the dialogue and what the future needs to look like to convey flow, uh more flow. In terms of combined systems in the other communities, uh I would say that it's the same conversation with all the communities. Each one of the communities have, you've built your systems, you've designed your systems to certain design targets, and the question comes, do you want a higher design target? Do you want more capacity? And if that's the case from GLWA, then we have to talk about what that looks like and how we would allocate costs to build uh assets such as that. So um there are combined systems in uh local systems in our collection system, and they have made their, their investments around our commitment to them to provide that capacity to them. So they're complicated questions, but I think we have to have, we have to have the question. We have to answer it. We have to understand what that level of service is, and and do we need relief sewers or relief pump stations upstream perhaps of of some of the communities to be able to uh convey flow? That's where that um conversation about environmental stewardship and stewardship to the public health uh divert a bit, right? We may have a design target for the environmental response, but we might have a different design target for public health that indicates in these extensive uh rain events, these very intense rain events, perhaps we have to have discharges that are untreated in order to protect basements. So those are the kind of conversations that we're having around capacity. Um I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you. Uh good evening, CEO Coffey. Uh and I'm just probably doing follow-up questions, I think, to Councilmember Reed. So um it, I think, when you say that your equipment needs to function, I I guess people, you know, is, can we be more specific, meaning are backup generators um you know, in place? Uh and uh I know that there was some issue about who has, who powers uh Connor Creek and Freud. So has that been resolved? Like, has the equipment been purchased, repairs been made? And are backup generators in place so that in the short term, people can have a little better assurance? Uh and then just as part of that, do we now have, do we have twenty-four-hour staffing a- at the stations? And then um the third question is, of the one point seven billion uh in repairs that are slated over the next five years, how much of that will go to fixing Freud and Connor Creek?
Well, good questions. So let's talk about backup generation for a minute. Um I think it's important to understand that that although that seems like a, a, an obvious solution, it's, it's a quite complex solution. In fact, it's not, it's not the the most reliable solution that we would want to have at these pump stations. These pump stations together have about uh the energy demand of about twenty-five thousand homes. So the kind of reliable power that we need, we need utility power. Uh backup generators, that can work in some cases and some instances, but we actually just need multiple feeds. We need multiple feeds from uh our energy supplier. So that's been our focus, although we have had some conversations about backup generators. Uh it's not something that can be done in a short period of time. Um definitely not. Uh but, but the idea today is, okay, how do we get this reliable power? How can we get us where we need to be so that we know that if a power supply goes down, we have a redundant power supply? So that's the focus at this time, but it, it's also a brainstorming and focus session on our conversations with our energy suppliers uh to see what it is that we can do in the near term and the long term. So if it's going to take a while for us to get another uh utility line, can we put generators in? Perhaps. It's not an easy question, but we're certainly posing those questions to our energy supplier and, and our electrical engineers. Uh I would tell you at this moment, we, we have our power restored to fruit, the fruit pump station. Uh the problem that we had with power supply that occurred in June uh is no longer a po- a problem. That has been fixed. Uh but we do want even more redundancy at that critical location. Uh these, when I say these, these pumps have to work, the, the energy has to be there, it's got to be good, clean energy source, and our pumps need to be able to be reliable. Uh I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip down to your last question for a minute because I think it's a nice segue into of the one point seven billion uh dollars of, of work that we have slated our capital improvement program. We're planning to spend about two hundred and fifty million dollars on the fruit and counter pump station upgrades. So these, these pump stations uh uh demand, like I said, that redundant power, utility power, not just generator power, but also we're rethinking, you know, do we have the right size pumps? Do we need to have, you know, more conveyance? The pump station at Connor was built in the late twenties, and the one in fruit in the fifties. So you can see how long live these, these pump stations are. So we want to make sure that the decisions we're making today will suit um the society's need in fifty and a hundred years. So we're talking through that. So right now, it's at two hundred and fifty million. Uh we're not going to delay the project. Um we're fast-tracking these conversations about whether or not the project should have some different elements to it. Um and in terms of staffing, I'm going to turn that over to Naveed Muram. Naveed?
Thank you, Sue. Yeah. Thank you. So for the Connor Creek CSO facility, we staff that facility, which is the treatment facility downstream of the two pump stations that um that is manned twenty-four, seven. However, the pump stations, we monitor storms, and based on the storm events is where we staff. So right now, at the time when we um initiated our strategy, it was based on half inches with fifty percent probability. Now we have reduced that to even a quarter of an inch uh prediction with less than, with fifty percent probability. So yes, we are staffing those facilities for all storm events um in the interim period to um to make sure that we have the, the available hands on that if something was to occur.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh anybody else? Customer or fluid?
Thank you. Um thank you for being here. We appreciate you taking our questions. Um and the, the only follow-up question that I had was um I'm glad to see that the investigation is, is um moving along quickly and that you expect it to be done in sixty to ninety days. How do you foresee those results being presented to the public? Would it be? Um you know, will there be a PowerPoint? Will there be a town hall? Um is there going to be uh an effort made to reach and inform as many people as possible?
So I would tell you that this last, last question first, yes, right? So I, I know that our board is committed to transparency, and in my mind, the only way through this for Great Lakes Water Authority is to be as transparent as possible, which means reaching as many people as possible. We have to explain what happened, right? We have to explain the good, the bads, all of it. And and so we certainly will have a concerted effort to make sure that we're reaching all the people that need to be reached with the message about what it, what occurred. So I uh, I don't know about the format exactly, whether it's PowerPoint or, or something else, but it certainly would suit the audience, and it's probably gonna come out to our board in a, I would assume in a PowerPoint presentation, perhaps there'll be a report, a written report, but as we pivot to audiences uh that are less um engaged daily in sewer systems, I'll probably be other, other presentation formats. But I would assume probably something like a PowerPoint presentation uh that can be easily understood. And that, you know, we would, we would take that around as a road show. We would make sure their member partners had access to it, and we would post it on our on our website. So I see us moving forward in that direction.
Okay, um I was more concerned about, would it be in the type of format perhaps where people would be able to ask you questions? Would it be something like a town hall, or would it, is it more likely to be something that you would, as you said, you know, send out to the various communities?
So I haven't, I haven't really given that, that much thought yet, to be honest with you. Um but we will take that under advisement. I hear what you're saying, what you're, you're wondering if there's going to be able to be a back and forth kind of conversation rather than a, a report out. So let me think about that, and let, uh let me, let me figure out how we're going to go through that. I think that's an interesting idea. I hadn't thought about that before.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Uh Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, and welcome to the GLWA team, and special thanks to um Michelle. She and I go back a ways, and you responded right away um to help make tonight happen, and I appreciate that greatly and certainly appreciate our city. you responded right away, um, to help make tonight happen and I appreciate that greatly and certainly appreciate our city manager for following up on all his work subsequent to that, too. Um, my questions will come through the lens of, um, how we as an elected body can identify tools that support our administration by helping to create some accountability and leverage. So, Ms. Coffee, the look that I took, uh, on your website and the research that I did, um, produced, uh, the information on the One Water Partnership, and I wonder if this kind of helps us get to, um, member fluids, um, expectation that that could be a vehicle potentially to make some of that resident facing communication happening. But as I understand it, that group is, um, falls under your umbrella and is empowered to provide, um, joint purchasing tools. So perhaps it's, um, a financing tool that we, um, city manager can use going forward if we find that we have a gap in revenue that is needed to meet some of the expenditures going forward. I mean, perhaps there's even bonding authority or other um, options through that and, uh, that could give us capacity with our, um, other local jurisdictions as well. Um, and it specifies that regional training can happen, um, that you can pilot new technology. Uh, there's the ability to, uh, provide for the creation of a work group and that those work groups can actually provide scorecards for GLWA. And I understand the body's only advisory and doesn't have decision-making authority, but certainly it helps hold both of us accountable, um, which I think is a really healthy thing, um, and also is run by a third-party facilitator. So, um, it seems like that might be a way, uh, that is structural, that we could work together, uh, toward and, you know, move the discussion from just talk to actual action. And then I see too in your bylaws, um, you can create, uh, committees, which might be the one that you referenced in your comments, um, to work solely on issues like this. Um, and then I see too that you have a capital improvement program or plan, obviously, as all bodies like yours do. Um, I'm curious, and you probably can't answer this question now, but maybe as a follow-up, um, to this meeting, you know, how many Gross Point Park, uh, how many projects within the Gross Point Park jurisdiction are provided for in that capital improvement plan? Um, and is that a way, Mr. Seisland, um, and Mr. Drows, for us to make sure that the investment that we need is planned for, um, by incorporating them into that capital improvement plan? And then, um, uh, this is probably something, um, member fluid might, um, appreciate as well. As we, as a community, take, uh, implement measures in the green infrastructure area or, you know, with downspout compliance, I'm wondering if there's anything GLWA can do to help incentivize those behaviors so that they serve as credits, so to speak, as, you know, we meet expectations with you. Um, and then lastly, I saw a program called WRAP, W R A P, that apparently sets aside a percentage of revenue, um, to residents for plumbing repairs. So that was another substantive thing that I found on your website. So just to summarize, it would be the One Water Partnership is an opportunity to work together. Um, the creation of a committee, um, not one that burdens the process, but that creates accountability that could potentially have, um, Gross Point Park representation on it. Uh, and then the opportunity to secure financing and the like, um, to be incorporated into the capital improvement plan. Um, and then potential credits to incentivize the right behaviors. And then lastly, if there's a financial opportunity for our residents through WRAP, I'm not sure what the criteria is for that, um, but it would be great to make, um, that available to our residents. So I know I threw a lot at you, but didn't want to burden the meeting and some of that we can, um, follow up with, but wanted to at least plant those seeds with you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So our One Water Partnership, uh, is, is pretty broad. We have on average, a, a meeting and a half a week. So we have something like eighty meetings a year. Uh, and we have all different kinds of meetings. So we have meetings, we're, and we are getting ready to, to put a meeting together that where we're going to talk more about the WRAP program, the Water Residential Assistance Program, what WRAP stands for, and, uh, certainly that's, uh, bill assistance and also people can qualify for plumbing repairs. There's no doubt about it. Um, I do encourage, and we've talked, uh, with City Manager Seisland about a participation in that member outreach. All these different meetings that we have, we have some that are very technical for operators. We have financial ones. We have ones that are more about planning. So I think that's a great place. Uh, and, and certainly we, we stand at the ready to hear, uh, what our member partners are interested in having that program be. So I really do appreciate, uh, your, your recognition of it. You're taking a look at it. And, and it's just like you said, it's, um, facilitated by a third-party facilitator to help ensure that we have good two-way communication between our, our member partners, our customers and, and GLWA. And we do a scorecard every year. We benchmark us ourselves against, uh, this customer satisfaction scorecard from the previous years. And so, uh, there are lots of ways to get that kind of good feedback. Some of the pillars that we have at Great Lakes Water Authority, uh, are transparency and collaboration. So that's, like I said, the only way through this, uh, for GLWA is, is to continue to stand on those pillars, to be as transparent as possible and to, and to collaborate. So we're happy to engage any, any and all ideas about how we can take that member outreach program uh, and meet your needs in, in a more substantive way. Happy to do that.
Great. Thank you. I'm a big believer in managing for results. So if we can structurally provide for progress, that's, that's great. So thank you. We'll be following up.
Anybody else? Councilor Rowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. Coffee and Mr. Miram. Uh, thank you so much for your time, um, and good luck. This is a very important work you guys are doing and it really affects all of us. Uh, you mentioned the power failure. Um, is there anywhere on your website that may have the facts of what occurred on June twenty-sixth after midnight? Uh, lots of people have different thoughts and this may help put their minds at ease as improvements are in progress and completed with, you know, with what's being impacted. If you can share that.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to find them yet, but it certainly will be the, the, uh, subject of the, of the investigations, both of them, right? So we, we talk about a timeline and, and we've been talking a lot about a micro timeline. We think that that timeframe, uh, before and after midnight on June twenty-fifth is of particular interest to everyone. So eventually you'll see those types of things come out. At this point, they're not there. One of the things we want to make sure that we do is not speculate. So we've got to act and, and make sure that the facts are the facts before we publish those, but, uh, it is our intent to have those types of facts published.
Awesome. And this leads to my next question. Uh, we, around here, we all run when it rains. Uh, we look to support each other and assist those that are being impacted each rain event as someone seems to be getting impacted by each of them. Uh, do you guys have a dashboard or updates that could be shared to our customers and residents to follow on their own? Maybe something online so we can possibly share from our website on the G P P website. Uh, again, to kind of educate our residents on what's going on, what's being planned, why is it being done? And again, to put our minds at ease so we can go away for the weekend.
I know that we are doing what, uh, rain event alerts these days on our social media platforms. Um, and I'm certain that we can get you plugged into that if you want to pass those alerts along to your people, absolutely. And um, I would say that Michelle Stradalski, uh, who is our Chief of Public Affairs, can help with that and we can get you connected to her, uh, and in that regard. I don't know, um, Navee, is there anything else in that regard that you think might, we might be?
No, I think that that is, that's kind of our first step. I think there's multiple, um, avenues that we're taking as part of the after action. One of them, I think, is, uh, communication with the, the communities, the member partner operators to have access to our SCADA system at an operator level so that they have knowledge of our system in addition to their system so that we can have that closer contact communication. I know that doesn't answer your question as it relates to the residents, but the operator's knowledge is just as important for them because they have the tools and the conduits within the municipality that they're servicing to be able to communicate as well. So I think it, it's going to end up being a multiple-layered approach where we will pu- push out communications, we will provide, um, additional community meetings where we, we will be able to collaborate as operators. We provide access to SCADA systems, so bringing your operators to be more alert to our system as well. And I think through those multiple layers, we'll be able to come up with a, um, a comprehensive response strategy to keep the, to keep the residents informed as much as possible.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
That's a good point. Let, let me just, I'm gonna, I want to do a plug here for, for, for the fact that Gross Point Park already, your operators, your city manager already reached out to us and said, hey, is there data, SCADA data? When we say SCADA data, that's our supervisory control and data acquisition. That's real-time operational data. So we've already had some contacts with Gross Point Park, trying to make those connections and make sure that you all have eyes on, on our system downstream of where you discharge. Uh, that's, that's really good operational information. So, uh, that's already in the works.
Great. Thanks so much. And again, I do wish you guys good luck and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Proton Robson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Mrs. Coffee for coming and, and your staff. I deeply appreciate that. Communication is key. I hope we'll see you in the future as well. You mentioned in your already comment, the Regional Watershed Hub, there is a meeting. Can you explain that hub briefly?
I sure can. Uh, so the Watershed Hub is, is the newest of the, uh, outreach meetings that we have, and we bring together uh, a, a different set of people to talk about watershed management. Uh, we recently completed a wastewater master plan updated. Part of that master plan identified the fact that this is not just separated wastewater and it's not just combined sewer systems, but the rivers themselves and the health of the water bodies around, uh, Southeast Michigan are of huge importance to us. And we don't want to just stop at, at doing things like taking samples at our outfalls. Rather, we want to look at the overall watershed help. So we, uh, that, that plan suggested that we stand up a new, a new work group, um, in, in this member partner, um, outreach construct. And we've had multiple, I, I think it's been about a year and a half, we've had multiple webinars. So who we see there are stormwater professionals, which we didn't have contact with before. So when you take a look around, say, drain commissioners' offices, watershed, um, councils, people who, who have their, um, have their passion in the health of the rivers and the Rouge River, the Detroit River, uh, Lake St. Clair and the like. And so it's a group of professionals who come together to talk about what is the next step in, in the regional, uh, collection system because it's not just about wastewater. It's not just about drainage. So right now they're working on what they call a data hub or a data mart where all the sampling data from all the, uh, the, the, uh, watershed work is put together in a place where it can be, um, leveraged. And also just talking about sampling goals. One of the other things that we, um, uh, had recommended out of our wastewater master plan is regular sampling in the water bodies, not just during rain events or discharges, but actual, uh, a network of, um, uh, samplers in the Rouge, Detroit and Clinton rivers that would collect continuous sampling. And the reason for that is, you know, that the, uh, environment, negative environmental impact doesn't just happen when it rains on those rivers. There are, um, many, many, uh, circumstances in which things go wrong during dry weather that can also impair the waterways. So, so those are the main points of what that watershed hub looks like. It's certainly open if Gross Point Park, if you all want to participate in that, we can, we can get you connected to that.
This, this is briefly what I'm touching upon is we all, my colleagues, and we touched on this, we're advocating, I think, for more viable input for the gross points. I, I know how, uh, GLWA is set up. Sometimes we feel kind of like the, uh, and also Southeast Side of Detroit, Jefferson, Chalmers, kind of like maybe uh, underrepresented. Uh, you mentioned and others, the, uh, One Water Partnership, but cutting to the chase, I'm encouraging you, uh, to, to offer and think about viable, uh, input by the gross points in Southeast, uh, Detroit, whether it's, uh, ad hoc committee, advisory committee. I know our city manager has spoken to you about certain ideas, but could you just speak to that? Is there a, a place at the table for the gross points?
Yeah, there certainly is, right? So, so let me tell you a little bit about the wastewater system that's different than the water system. So, uh, we don't, we, we contract in, in the wastewater system with counties also, with Wayne County, Oakland County and, and Omid, which is an Oakland-McCombs interceptor district. And they in turn have customers, uh, but we have a bunch of direct customers, such as yourself also. And so we look for and seek out that kind of, um, representation. And I would tell you there are less than twenty first-tier customers, including yourself, who have, uh, contracts with us directly. So we are happy and, and actually pleased to have you at the meetings to hear that. So one of the things we did after, uh, speaking with City Manager Seisland was, uh, it, 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 City Manager Seisland's suggestion was let's have, let's have a meeting of all the gross points Southeast McCombs and, and the east side of Detroit. And we have Detroit, right? This is kind of the east side group of communities. Three major interceptors and the Detroit River Interceptor carries the flows from, from Girls Point, Southeast McCombs, uh, and Detroit. And so we're setting that meeting up so that we can have very specific conversations about the east side system. Uh, and that's not to say that the other parts of the system aren't important. We have that, we have a Northwest Interceptor, uh, for the Western communities and a, we certainly have, um, other large trunk sewers, but, uh, I hear what you're saying. I take your, I take your advisement seriously and, and I think it's important for us to hear what it is that you all want, right? I, I think there's some obvious things that we know that you want, but there are also obvious things. And when we come together and we collaborate, we can, we can usually kind of leverage each other up and come up with better ideas. Uh, so I, I certainly take your advice. Uh, I think it's great advice and, and we will continue to work on that. Um, and we, we should be, we've already called for, uh, attendees for that east side meeting with the Girls Point Southeast McCombs in Detroit. So it's in the works. Yeah, it's in the works.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. Um, I think that, uh, we've gone all the way around council with, uh, questions and comments and appreciate everybody's, uh, participation. I think, uh, council covered a lot of the questions that I would have, uh, would have asked. I'm not going to be redone it. I want to thank you again. Suzanne, for bringing your team here and, and, and responding to our questions. Um, we truly appreciate your, uh, your presence here. There's a lot going on, obviously. And there's a lot going on in Gross Point Park. There's some, some topics on our agenda tonight that, uh, address some of the things that, uh, we're trying to pursue here. Uh, but if there's anything that has come out of the recent, uh, tragic events that's, that's positive, I think it's the, uh, call to action. And the call to action seems to be happening on a more, uh, regional coordinated basis, uh, a lot more communication between, um, between entities, uh, which, uh, given the interconnected, uh, interconnections and, and the way that, uh, that our stormwater systems or sanitary systems, uh, operate, uh, is essential if we're going to make progress. And I, I appreciate you taking a leadership role in that because at the end of the day, much of it all comes together at Great Lakes Water Authority. And so you are in the most important position to help us all coordinate our efforts uh, to, uh, make the improvements that, uh, we all talked about tonight. So that's, that's all I've got to say. If you have any closing comments, uh, the floor is yours. Uh, otherwise, we thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, well, you're very welcome. And I'll be brief and say, I really truly appreciate the opportunity to be in front of, of this body and get out and, and speak with, uh, people who, who cares deeply about the region a- as we do. I am absolutely committed to supporting the Great Lakes Water Authority to provide a level of service that you all can be proud of and, and be comfortable with and rely on. Uh, so thank you for allowing me to be here today and, uh, it certainly won't be the last time. Uh, and if you ever, ever have a, a question, you can call our office and we can happily plug you into the many things that we have going on from a regional perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Sue and Navee.
Okay, let's, uh, let's continue on, um, to the next agenda item, which is the, which is committee and commission reports. And, um, well, I, I studied the calendar and as to my, to my knowledge, we have had no committee or commission meeting since our last council meeting. If anybody conducted one that I forgot about, uh, let me know, but I think that we can move on past this agenda item tonight, uh, which sometimes is pretty meaty, but, uh, we've all been occupied with a lot of other things, I think, in the last, uh, month or so. And I think all that's going to catch up with us again, uh, by September. Um, the next, uh, topic, uh, major area is unfinished business. It starts with council comment. Uh, and I want to point out that, uh, while not on, while not specifically on the agenda, there will be an opportunity for council comment at the end of new business as their, as their customary is in our meeting. So council should be aware of that. And, uh, and let's start with, is there any council comment on unfinished business? Hi, Councilor Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. I would just like to take this moment to thank, um, Clerk Finance Director Blayhut for the finance report that accompanied our consent, um, agenda. It was a thorough review of where each of our funds stands, and that's the kind of monitoring that's going to ensure, um, fiscal responsibility and stability. So thank you to her and the administrative team for pulling that together.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, let's move on to, uh, the next item, ordinance two twenty-six gutter and downspout disconnection. I'll ask the administration to introduce this topic. Uh, this topic was on our last month's agenda. Uh, we tabled it, uh, and, uh, to, uh, to this meeting, uh, to have, give everybody a chance to, uh, think some more about it. And it's back. Uh, so administration, if you would reintroduce it.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Danner, and I'll have the help of City Attorney Holler with me as well, I, in this discussion. Uh, so City Attorney Holler proposed a summary that this proposed amendment to the downspout ordinance is here tonight. This amendment strengthens the existing ordinance and conforms to similar ordinances in other communities. The purpose of this amendment is to reduce the sudden inflow of rainwater into the sanitary sewer system, overflow of the drainage system and the resulting pollution of Lake St. Clair and the reduction of basin flooding. It requires the disconnection of residential rainwater downspouts within the city. And prohibits the illicit discharge of stormwater runoff from commercial uses into the city sewer system. Uh, the proposed amendment formalizes exemption decisions and requests in the appeal process that may result from those decisions. Section seven sixteen addresses penalties for noncompliance. And um, with that, the administration recommends adopting this amendment in those sections of uh, seven fifteen, seven sixteen. Uh, city attorney Holler, any other further comments?
No, I think that summary sums it up. Um, just by way of clarification, I left the ordinance exactly as we had uh, proposed it at the special meeting. Uh, technically, I think from a procedural standpoint, that motion to adopt that is on the table, it was tabled. Uh, for this meeting, so as part of the discussion, if we want to talk about changes or amendments, we can do that. Um, but I I didn't want to make any changes prior to having the opportunity for the public and for this uh, body to discuss.
And I, yeah, I want to, um, I think we should put a motion back on the table because uh. Without going back and checking carefully, I think that we tabled the agenda item, not necessarily a motion. So I'd like to uh, start the discussion by ensuring that we do have a motion on the table to uh, adopt. Get a second and then we'll have a discussion, have the chance to get amendments made to uh, to it if we need to. So with that, uh, I'd like to get a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
Or.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Uh, now we can begin, begin discussion on the uh, on the uh, on the motion and therefore the ordinance. Uh, Councilor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Um, I have a couple of questions for administration and then comments about the ordinance. Um, one is have we, do we have a good, for, this is for city manager size on, do we have a, a good estimate? As to the number of downspouts that would be, that are, would be considered uh, an illicit connection? Based on this ordinance?
I don't have an exact number, but I could tell you, we're probably getting into the per actual downspouts, the thousands.
Okay. Um, and then um, the, the prior ordinance, the existing ordinance that's on the books right now, did have a hardship exemption. Do you know how many permits were granted under uh, under the current ordinance?
Actual, actual hardship, I don't have the exact number. However, of those that I know uh, from history wise, typically the exemptions were uh, more similar for bait or backyard flooding. Uh, issues which this ordinance, as it is right now, eliminates that exemption from there. Uh, because a lot of times the uh, you know, the downspouts would be redirected onto the uh, backyards of homes. However, we have kept the exemptions, for example, of any of those that are, you know, near the driveway or the sidewalk that could create a tripping hazard. Uh, as well as if there's an area in between uh, two homes that you don't want to uh, flood your neighbors, um, you know, footing and drain tiles there. So to your exact question, do I have a number? No, I do not.
Do we know whether we've, whether we've, anyone's ever invoked that hardship exemption?
Uh, I have heard, yes, there have been exemptions, yes.
Okay, and then getting to the ordinance itself. My major concern, and I compared some of our other existing ordinances, and it is the um. The, the misdemeanor. Uh, provision and that is um. Section seven dash one six B two, that any uh, person found in violation. That it's a misdemeanor violation, maybe fine up to five hundred dollars and sentence up, sentenced up to ninety days in jail or both. I was just looking at some of our other ordinances and we don't jump to a misdemeanor offense. For a first offense, for example, um, public urination, I think it was the fourth offense in a thirty-six month. Um, timeframe that um, they, it was a civil infraction until that fourth offense. I would be more comfortable, and I also think it would give um, the court some latitude. Because going right to a misdemeanor, I mean, that's, that's a criminal record. So I would be more comfortable with a, a first offense being a civil infraction. And before we move right to the misdemeanors, that's my main concern on the penalty phase.
You mind, Larry, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Reed, do you mind if I address that?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, and and I think if you, at least the intent of section seven sixteen was not to make a misdemeanor the initial um, enforcement mechanism. I think if you look at seven sixteen A, uh, the first, the, the way this is supposed to work is the first or a violation. You'd get a notice of violation, a fine, essentially a civil infraction. The misdemeanor portion is intended for um, multiple violations, refusals to comply, refusals to allow the city. Uh, you know, to, to enforce the ordinance. It certainly is not the intention, nor do I think the judge or the prosecutor that right now, you know, is part of the city attorney's office. Are looking to make this a misdemeanor offense. The idea is to encourage compliance, um, and that's where you get the notice of violation and opportunity to correct it. And then a fine, the misdemeanor is really reserved for people that refuse to comply. And I think that is consistent with a lot of the, I don't have them handy, but a lot of our um, our, our city code does use the misdemeanor enforcement mechanism. And this is intended to be.
I agree with that. I, I think it's just more the wording, because if you look at some of those ordinances, all within the same paragraph, that it will say, a first offense. Is a civil infraction and it has that escalation right within the ordinance. So somebody, you know, it's very clear that, okay, we're going to give you, you know, one chance. I mean, civil infraction does carry a penalty, a fine, but as you know, your noncompliance will eventually lead to a misdemeanor. I would be more comfortable with that wording being in the, in that penalty section that I just cited. That's, that's the main concern I have there.
Yeah, and and I think what the ordinance says is it's unlawful to violate. It, it may, we can clean up the wording, I see what you're saying, any person failing to comply with any notice of violation. So I think conceptually, we're on the same page, if you want to tweak the wording, we can certainly do that.
Okay, I think that what, what um. If there's, if anybody would like to weigh in on that particular point about the civil infraction versus misdemeanor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I would, uh, I had a extended discussion with Councilmember Reed. Uh, about this, and I think we agree with, and I think our, our colleagues will too, and there has to be, I think, some clarity. And that's what a civil infraction uh, would present. I don't see that clarity uh, in this draft of ordinance. And it would be helpful as Councilmember Reed stated, uh, if the, uh, if our judge had that to fall onto. And also have a, a, a civil infraction fine attached to that, I would also get the attention of the person that is before the judge. Right now, it looks like it just goes right to. Uh, misdemeanor violation, and I think uh, a lot of judges in the state, they're reticent to lay a misdemeanor. Conviction of the citizens for, for gutter problem or blank problem. So this gives a, in my mind, the judge another tool in his toolbox. And and also gets the attention of the violator as well.
Uh, Councilor McConnell.
Thanks, so yes, I reiterate the concerns I raised when we brought this up at the last meeting, which were exactly that about it going to a misdemeanor. Um, I think we, I, I also tried to find any uh, comparable ordinances in other cities that have that kind of penalty. And I couldn't find those either, so I would be concerned about that and and want to, to remedy that uh, portion.
So we could um. On this particular point, I'd entertain a uh, an amendment to the motion to require uh. Modification of the wording in section seven dash sixteen. Uh, to specifically uh, identify civil infraction as a first level of, of penalty. Is that, uh, is that consistent with what you, what is being discussed by council right now, Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I, I so moved, I would uh, so move, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Is there support for that?
Well, support.
Okay, we have support, so we have an amendment um, to uh. To modify the wording in the uh, seven point one six. I think that that will allow us ultimately be able to approve the uh, the ordinance with that, uh, with that, with that change tonight. Um, Councilor McConnell.
I can talk about other questions I have now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so the, the other two things, one is, uh, if we enact this, is there a deadline for compliance? Meaning, if not, can we consider establish one and delaying enforcement until after, you know, a deadline? So that people, again, as we heard from the resident tonight, who are now facing this sort of unfunded mandate. Uh, have, you know, a reasonable amount of time to do uh, what's being asked of them. Um, so that's the first question, is that addressed anywhere? Or can we make sure that we give some, some uh, reasonable amount of time for people to make the changes?
I'll, I'll move that to the administration, but just to be clear, it's already a violation, this is not a new.
No, I, I understand, I understand, but when you haven't been enforcing something, it's still, and and you, you are talking about people that are already reeling from having to make uh. Uh, you know, to deal with damages and impact. So now you're saying, hey, spend some more money. So I just trying to make sure that we are being practical and fair to our residents who are going to have to address this.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's an administration and a council decision that I can, I can put that in there, it's not in there now. I can add anything uh, the council so deems. Um, but we can certainly, if, if the administration wants to delay enforcement of it, we can add that for sure.
Then just to follow up on, uh, the other thing is that um, you know, a, a number of cities have enacted similar programs. But they typically offer reimbursement funds to residents who make these changes. So I wanted to know if, you know, we, we do have rescue fund dollars on the agenda tonight. Um, I don't know if there's any consideration of maybe um. Somehow incorporating that, but um, most of the, many of the cities that have these kind of programs were requiring uh, some changes be done to the home. Um, we offer, the, the municipalities offer some form of reimbursement, so I just wanted to raise that issue for consideration as well.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Fluid.
Um, I also had concerns about um, the gentleman who wrote in for public comment. And um, you know, I'm, I don't know that person, I'm not sure of what his actual situation is. But uh, I know at one point we had talked about um, putting some, making some instructional videos available. I think city manager had already identified some things where we could, we could help people figure out how to do this. Um, so I hope we can go ahead and move forward with that and give people some, some options. It's, it was my understanding that most of the time this is a fairly easy fix, that's probably not the case for everybody. But um, do you want to, I, the city manager is nodding his head, do you want to go ahead and answer that? And then I have another question.
Yeah, so we're actually going to touch on that in a little bit, Councilmember Fluid. So uh, Patrick Drows will discuss later some of the educational pieces that we'll be putting out there together for, um, you know, downspout and other methods. For uh, drying out to the system, uh, you know, something relatively, if you're looking as simple as. Uh, obviously, in some areas, like the gentleman that spoke, or I read his public comment tonight, you know, that's definitely a driveway drain, which, you know, you're having to. You know, move a lot of earth and our concrete and that to, you know, uh, fix that issue. However, with a simple downspout, you know, it depends on the case, but luckily you can usually, you know, take a hacksaw. And you can, you know, cap that area and or you just get a plastic sleeve and you move it out. And then you can buy a little plastic um, uh, cap that goes over the sanitary line. So, you know, roughly in that, you're looking at a hundred fifty dollars probably per um, you know, actual downspout potentially. Uh, but obviously, this is something that, you know, we're, we're looking at move forward and then you had your next question.
Thanks, yeah. So my other question was.
I'm sorry, wait, but the, the city attorney had a comment or.
I just wanted to follow up on that, sorry, Councilmember Fluid, but there is also an exemption for undue hardship. So in a, in a case like that, where it's a much larger, more expensive project, that would qualify at least for an application to the, the newly created review board for an undue hardship exemption.
So, so it sounds like this person talked to somebody from DPW who maybe spoke a little bit precipitously in saying that. No appeals, we're probably going to make it through. Um, yeah. Which would kind of, would probably make me panic as well if I were in that situation. So um, okay, so, so my other question was how this is actually going to work in practice? For example, I know if somebody, if somebody walked up my street, it would appear that one of my downspouts is connected. So is code enforcement, and it's not, so is code enforcement going to be going around writing citations? Or are people, you, you know, and then you have to deal with a citation after it's written? Um, should people, you know, preemptively notify us that they are disconnected, even though they don't appear at first glance to be disconnected? Um, you know, how, how is this, how is this all going to work?
Yeah, so a couple of things to that, uh, you know, one of the first things we'll do, uh, considering if uh, this is adopted tonight. Obviously, as Councilmember McConnell said and others, we do want to give a grace period because we know this is a financial burden. Uh, for some residents to consider, uh, you know, disconnection from the system. And so what we love, what we do have is, uh, we do have a database system. Uh, when we actually did smoke testing, uh, that says how many uh, downspouts are connected uh, to your home or other areas. And so we'll send out a letter letting them know, hey, we know that you potentially, it may have changed. You know, that you have three or four of these, you know, please take a look. Uh, you know, DPW will be happy to assist and then we'll, you know, we'll come up with a number of days that, you know, for a response. And then, you know, we'll, we'll follow with them if they've, you know, followed up with DPW or that they've corrected that. And then obviously, you know, we can go through that process of if it has not been corrected and or such. But this is something that we know is, is going to take us some time and we really want to work with our homeowners and be as helpful as possible. Knowing that this is, this is hard, um, you know, to do and will be a cost to it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else? Um, are we ready? We have a motion and an amendment, I think we're ready to call a question. Uh, we'll do this in reverse order, first, uh, the amendment, the, we have an amendment on the table to uh, to modify the language in section seven point one six. Uh, to uh, identify civil infraction as a first level of penalty. Let's uh, call the roll on that question, please, on that amendment.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Uh, yes, the amendment uh, is, is passed. Now, let's go back to the original motion to adopt the uh. The ordinance as amended. Um, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Raylan?
I think Ms. McConnell has her hand up, I'm sorry.
I think you're out of order because we are in the process of voting.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Raylan? Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Uh, yes, uh, motion passes amended, um, so ordinance as, as amended has passed. Uh, Councilor McConnell, you had a comment.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, uh, if, if we can get something in writing about the grace period. And then hopefully further in the discussion, we can talk about the, the reimbursement. But is there some way, because the city attorney mentioned that he could put something in there, or I, I know the city manager talked about it. So I just want to clarify how that's going to be addressed.
And just real quick, Councilmember McConnell, it doesn't have to be in the ordinance, we have prosecutorial discretion. Um, we can take direction from the administration, uh, you know, vis a vis the council in terms of when and how it should be enforced. In other words, it, just because it gets passed and put on the bu- books doesn't mean we immediately have to um, you know, start prosecuting this. I don't think that's anybody's intention, so we'll wait and take direction from the administration. Um, you know, they're, they're, they're the ones tasked with enforcing it to begin with, and then it falls in, in our lap. So we'll take direction from that, but I, I'm comfortable that, you know, this is not going to be an immediate, um, kind of, it's never been intended to be a gotcha ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Now, let's move on to the next agenda item, Storm Progress Report Sewer System Study. Um, where a city engineer has a, a key role, I'll ask the administration to introduce the topic.
I guess, thank you, Mayor Denner. So first, I'll discuss a little bit on the monthly progress report prepared by Patrick Dros and OHM, and then I'll let Patrick uh, you know. And then I'll let Patrick, you know, pipe in as well from some of the discussions we've had. So regarding sewer televising and manhole condition assessment, that bidding document is for closed circuit televising of all forty one miles of sewer pipe and inspection of over six hundred manholes within Gross Point Park. The project also includes as needed cleaning of sewers less than forty eight inches in diameter. The project has been advertised publicly on MITN or Mitten and is currently out for bids. A public bid opening will be held on September tenth at the city offices. And a formal recommendation for award will be presented to the city council at the September twenty seventh city council meeting with work expected to commence immediately thereafter. Coordination with agencies, you heard a little bit from Sue Coffey and Great Lakes Water Authority of that, the Wayne County Drain Commission. The Fox Creek Enclosure Sewer, which conveys sewer from several shoreline communities, passes through GPP and is owned and operated by the Wayne County Drain Commission. The city has filed a FOIA with Wayne County to obtain as-built information on the sewer along with condition data. And we're hopeful we can also set a meeting with the Wayne County Drain Commission. DWSD owns and operates several sewers in the city limits. Information has been requested from DWSD on the condition of these sewers, and we're looking to have a meeting as well. Eagle, an update is provided to Eagle on the city's planned path forward regarding the extreme emergency relief valve. While no direct written responses have been received yet from Eagle, a letter to all southeast Michigan municipalities with sewer systems was issued indicating that Eagle will be conducting more stringent oversight of sewer systems in the near future. The planned actions of Gross Point Park appear to largely align with the strategy, along with likely requirements for future collection system permitting. As well, the city and OHM met with staff from the Gross Point Public School System to review reports of flooding and also discuss potentially connected parking lots. The city was provided with topographic information showing certain lots within defer elementary are disconnected. Gross Point Schools is tracking down additional documentation to demonstrate all parking lots are disconnected. Gross Point Schools also indicated willingness to work with the city on these efforts and a better defined through alternative sewer modeling in the future. Regarding model development, a proposal for engineering services related to the sewer models included in your packet tonight. This proposal includes effort to develop a comprehensive field verified and calibrated sanitary sewer model that'll be used to better understand our sewer system operations, analyze potential in-system optimization and relief designs. The model will be developed and cosort with observed findings from CCTV evaluation and flow metering to help ensure model accuracy. Regarding flow metering, at this time, OHM is recommending that six meters are installed within the system. The flow metering will serve two general purposes. The first is to provide calibration data that will allow us to compare modeled runoff with actual flows within a given drainage area. And this comparison will inform the necessity of modeling model variables so that predicted results match observed across various storm events. The second purpose of the flow meters is to serve as in-system instrumentation for monitoring flow conditions within critical sewers in real time in Gross Point Park. The meters will be up will be bid out with alternatives for rental and purchase. Bids will be reviewed and a recommendation for award will be issued in the coming months. The meters will be in place for a minimum of six months within Gross Point Park. Regarding the storm model, the city storm model has been run for the June and July events. The findings from these model results are being compared with flooding reports to help verify model accuracy. And the validity of the storm model will be useful to help identify areas for sanitary to storm diversion within the system. I know I know I rattled off quite a bit. Patrick, did you have any more from that document?
Nothing in specific management size. And really, that was just kind of a a thought of of one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was to provide counsel with kind of a an anticipated progress report of what's worked on month to month. And really, what this is really showing is that on the local level, we're trying to get as much information as we can about the existing system. And so reaching out to any entity with a sewer system within the city limits, so that includes Wayne County Drain Commission, DWSD and GLWA. Having that information available to our team allows us to, if there are questions and come up in the field, we'll just have that information more readily available. And it also works to preparing a a single database where all that information is stored. And this really gets more looking down the road towards asset management of just having that information digitized in an easy to access format. The the televising and manhole condition is all about figuring out, you know, what is the actual condition of the sewer system physically and identifying potential locations where we have higher than acceptable levels of influence infiltration, which is basically any sort of groundwater or direct runoff that that gets in that system. With a system over forty one miles in length, that's a lot of data. But the benefit of captioning it all at one point in time is that we have that all in a consistent database. And then much like we do with our road system, where we look at Pacer data, we can identify where those problems are. So when we do need to focus, because that will be the next step, we'll have a good idea about where best to to focus our efforts. Because this is going to be a a program that's going to take some time to get through. But having that data upfront really makes that job a lot easier. Having the GIS already in place, adding this condition data will give us that information. So that's kind of really the main things. And then Nick did mention that we have the engineering proposal that takes the the work of the condition assessment, the GIS data that's already present, getting that into a model where we can really get into some of the specifics of evaluating what happened on the events of June twenty sixth and July sixteenth. And then also looking forward to whatever those those additional considerations might be for alternatives. So really, just kind of expanding what Nick said, basically, that's what we've been really up to over the last three weeks here or so. And so far, it looks like we already have twenty one bidders with a copy of the CCTV. So hopefully, we get some big prices for you on the twenty seventh.
Okay, before we move into the next related item, which is the proposal for the sewer system study, are there any questions about the work in progress that was just highlighted? Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So as I'm reading this report, we've run the city's storm model and we're waiting for those results.
We we do have the results. What we're doing right now is just validating those against reported flooding events from the the two storm events. The 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 goal of that work is to really make sure that the model that we have is reliable, because we we want to use that as a tool when we analyze a storm and sanitary system in parallel. When we talk about the idea of diverting, the E R V is an example relies on the storm sewer system. So making sure that we have a model on the storm side that we can trust is is as important as it is on the sanitary side. So that's really, when you say value, we're really just kind of comparing against flooding flooding reports in the field.
Okay, and is does is any of this modeling ident identifying or just have the capability of identifying? I assume it does. Any other areas where the sanitary and storm system are combined?
At at present, the model does not. The model that we have for the storm is what it shows on that is it is a totally separated model. Now, if there are instances where we do find that there are might be some connections, and really, that's going to happen more on the sanitary side. But if we do happen to find any any sort of cross connections, those will be things that we'll want to make sure our model reflects. And that that's one of the great things about the 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 field work we do, the televising. We'll find those things. Those those could be things that are buried underground that just may not be in a record anywhere. So.
Okay, so we need to tell, okay, we need the televising to really answer that question. Is that what you're saying?
It'll help, yep. Every 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 minute of time that's spent out collecting data is going to be valid, very valuable in helping us validate what the model really is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Flut.
Um, thank you. I I have a couple of questions based on this report. But then, as you know, on August during our August fourth meeting, I was in the car on my way to vacation and I couldn't see the the presentation from that evening. So I I did look at that slideshow, the the PowerPoint after I got back. So I have a couple of questions from that, and then I have a couple of questions from this report for today. One thing is, and this may be something that we can't even talk about at this point, but, you know, do we feel confident that the pumps at Patterson are are working the way that they should and taking care of i- if we if we were fully separated? Do we feel that they could properly dispose of our storm water?
So based on the the design events we use, so for the conveyance, the ten year storm, and then we want to manage that hundred year storm, we feel that what what is in place right now at Patterson meets that design threshold.
Okay, and just because you happen to say that, SEMCOG had a webinar, I think, two weeks ago. And they what what they were modeling is that hundred year storms are now every ten years. That was, they were, they were very clear about that and that that's what we should be should be planning for. Do we have reports from the testing that was done after twenty sixteen? Have we gone back and looked at those things to ensure that all of those fixes that were planned after twenty sixteen and the smoke testing and all of that? Do we have that information and have we looked at it already?
So I'll answer a little bit of that. So our former engineer, Stan Tech, who was working with the city in two thousand and sixteen, did do smoke testing and dye testing within Gross Point Park. OHM does have those results, and that's something that we're actually looking at as well. And and they're, you know, updating their information to further reflect some of that, the maps. Because again, Stan Tech was the city's engineer for close to, I think, almost thirty years. So OHM has been, you know, looking at their documents, updating their records. And then so to answer your question, yes, we have been using that information from two thousand and sixteen that we know.
Okay, thank you. I I'm going to reiterate my my call for a communications plan so that if we get another heavy storm, stormfall, rainfall, thunderstorm two weeks from now, that we do advise residents there's a risk of flooding and we do let them know as the event is happening, do they need to clear the drains or not? Should they let should they let the drains be clogged? I mean, several people have brought that up. Apparently, it does make a difference. So again, I'm probably just going to say that every meeting. We have to make sure we're communicating with people while these things are happening. As well as as interim CEO Coffey said, you know, we need to be in touch with social media at GLWA and making our residents aware of those capabilities too. Do we have the ability right now to go ahead and make sure that those alleys are separated? If we're aware of places where the alleys are not separated, can we go ahead and start working on that?
So that's something that actually Patrick and DBW is working on right now. We're looking to obtain some bids and see what those costs are for separating in the alleys. There were a couple of areas that we were actually looking to pave. However, upon further review, you know, those alleys were not separated. So I said, no way, you know, we got to separate these first before we pave any. And so, yes, we are in pursuit of that right now.
Okay, and then one more thing. The emergency relief valve. I have concerns about this. I want would like a lot more information about it. I know some people have concerns. Some people are totally on board with this. But the report that we have today says feedback reveals strong community support for relief systems. Have we gotten feedback from our community on this? And in order to get feedback, I think, just like me, I think people would like to have more information about this so that they can make, you know, an informed decision and give an informed opinion to the city. You know, there's a there's a big difference between treated sewage and untreated sewage. Do we have a place we can we can store it to be treated? Is it going to be treated effectively? You know, I I have so many questions. And rather than show up here for a council meeting and find out we're going to be voting yes or no on a relief valve, I would like us to have a discussion as we go along and make sure that this is going to be the best option for the city. Because it may be, I'm not, I'm not saying that it isn't. But I would like to be really informed about it. I'd like to have a lot of detail and I'd like to have some time to think about it and to get resident input rather than just be presented with, we're voting yes or no on a relief valve. So I I think it's a it's a big issue and I'd really like to for us to talk about it as we go through this process.
Manager sizes, if I could respond to that.
Yeah.
I I I totally agree with that approach. And I don't want to maybe jump in the agenda too far ahead. But definitely part of the sewer study that is kind of the next council, the next item includes that very discussion. It's part of, as CEO Coffey said, there's a discussion about level of service that, you know, especially GLWA is focused for years on pollution control and water quality. And flood control has really not been a big thing, a big focus area, at least of their prior master plans. They heard, you know, through a lot of the communications and and conversations over the last six months, or excuse me, six weeks, that that conversation is changing and flood control is an important thing. Similarly, from from our public hearings and and meetings we've had, we've we've gotten, we've gotten the flavor that there's definitely an interest in the flood control side of things. But what we've what we've not done is is evaluated that from an engineering standpoint. Of, you know, how effective is this valve? Are there options for in-system storage, retention? That's the whole benefit. I don't want to steal Val's Valerie Novice's thunder. She's my partner on the on the line today to to discuss that portion of of the engineering study. But those those model results are going to be paired with potential projects that ultimately are also going to have cost to them. And so there's a conversation about level of service. To to meet a certain level of service, these are some of the options that we can do. And those might include the E R V, it might include retention. It could also include potentially strategic installation of backwater valves in certain areas. Those are all things that that we're going to put forth in the engineering study and then present to the public through level of service conversation in in a format that's that's understandable. So maybe those that aren't as technically focused. But so people as as users of the utility system understand what these various levels of service mean to them in terms of risk to their property. And so it's not just a E R V yes or no type vote. It's really, you know, there's going to be a series of of options on the table that as a community, we look at, what do we do for today? But maybe we're looking at for the next hundred years, what are what are those kind of decisions that we need to make? So I we're I think we're in lockstep on that. It's definitely going to be a thoughtful process with engineering background and costs for people to consider, make those judgments for themselves.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the next related item here, which is the proposal that this that's a good segue into the proposal on the table for the sanitary sewer system stud study. The I'll let the administration introduce it. But their recommendation is that we approve the proposal in the amount of a hundred fifty six thousand dollars as presented. So let's start with an introduction by the by the city manager and then move on to an explanation of the proposed work.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So I'll keep this brief because I know Patrick and Valerie have a lot to add to the conversation. But this sewer system study will be utilized in a multi-phase approach. We would start commencement of this on September first of this year with tasks one through five completed by June first of two thousand and twenty two and followed with ongoing public engagement reporting. The seven tasks that OHM would be providing to the city would be project initiation, data collection and mapping, condition assessment, targeted inflow removal, flow metering, hydraulic model analysis, resiliency, public engagement reporting. And so with that said, I'll let a city engineer, Patrick Drows, go ahead and get started. And then he also has his colleague Valerie, who will be with us on this project.
Let me let me jump in just a little bit before you get started. I mentioned the price tag and the financial impact. I had a clarifying discussion with city manager earlier today. And the sewer, Water and Sewer Fund has adequate reserves to fund this work, should we decide to approve it. Okay, with that, we'll go back to describing what the work is.
Thank you, Manager Seisland. I'm not sure if we can unmute Valerie.
Let's see if I can find her. I was looking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Very good. So we really kind of hit a lot of those key goals of this project, this sewer system study. And, you know, in general, what this is really looking to do is, is take the data that we have, the data that we're going to collect, and transfer this into basically an engineering study that will result in some options that we can put forth to the community for consideration. With that, Valerie, I, I think maybe getting into some of the nuts and bolts, maybe of task 3 through, through 6, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of sharing your approach and how we'll, we'll run this project.
Sure. So test 3 is, is flow metering, and as I think was mentioned earlier during this, this meeting, there, we're proposing six flow meters to be installed for up to six months. And the focus of that really is to, to break the, the city down into smaller subtributary drainage areas to, to really understand where the flows are coming from and develop the inputs that will go into the, the hydraulic model. I'm actually going to jump to the resiliency and public engagement, and then I'm going to come back to the model development. Because there's been a lot of discussion this evening, and, and you heard from Suzanne Coffey certainly, this, the level of service concept and the notion of, of bringing the public along throughout this process. And certainly, in the, the model, the hydraulic model analysis piece, the conversation of level of service will be important, and I'm, I'm speaking on the local level for the city itself. And, and that really is focused on what is an acceptable level of service to the community that we're willing to, to accept and, and not necessarily accept, or we're just going to have to accept that under some conditions, the system will not function as we would optimally like. And, and part of that is the downspout disconnection piece that the resolution or the ordinance was, was passed earlier this evening. So the public engagement and walking through every step of the way as we go through the hydraulic model analysis will be important. So the other piece of that is, is the resiliency. And that's intimately tied with that, the level of service conversation. The hydraulic model analysis piece will be essentially taking the existing sewer system that's been digitized and bringing that into a hydraulic model and being able to understand how the system is functioning today under existing conditions. And, and looking, and we'll use that flow meter data, we'll use the CCTV information, we'll use the the structure inventories to help calibrate that model to best reflect what's happening currently today. And then from there, we will evaluate alternatives to address the, the issues, the basement backups, and, and tie in whatever that level of service desire is. I think that's probably enough information at this point. Patrick, did I miss anything you want to touch on?
I, I think the only other thing that we can maybe add is that the public engagement part, we'll, we'll take a lot of this information that is fairly technical in nature. And, and we will find ways to push this information out to the community in ways that are useful to, to the average homeowner that probably doesn't look at sewer models all day long. And using things, like we, we have noted under six, a story map. This is a, a basically very much web-friendly tool that if somebody's interested in doing a downspout disconnection, for instance, it's a step-by-step guide that they can really just look at it and they can go through it. And there's even reporting in there. So if somebody does a downspout disconnection, we want to know about that. So, you know, one of the things we talked about last meeting was reporting and showing progress. You know, this model is a big part of the path forward and knowing what our goals are overall. But running parallel to that is, is really going to be an improvement of our system in general. So, you know, when we do our, our televising of the system, we're going to, we're going to learn a lot about it. You know, we're going to, we're probably going to remove a lot of sediment from the system. So it's going to be interesting to know how much we actually take away. You know, and all this information that we're collecting is valuable to know because it, it demonstrates what we are doing to improve the system. And so, you know, having that two-way conversation to be able to understand if people on, at home are doing work, that's valuable, because ultimately where this is going, and this is mentioned under the memo, is that the state is going to start looking at collection systems and making sure that, that on a daily or yearly basis, that communities are doing things to improve their system. So documenting this information is going to be part of not only this plan that we're talking about today, but long-term permitting needs. So, so really, Valerie, I think really hit strongly on, on the main goals of that resiliency. What those sewer model options are going to, going to present. But throughout all of that, this public engagement part, and it, and it's been starting already with these meetings we've had over the last several weeks, to really start to, to bring the public along. And then we'll be finding ways in the, in the, as part of this process to really gather feedback from the community about things like level of service and resiliency.
Okay.
That, I think we can turn it to questions.
With that, let's, what I'd like to do, I think, is get a motion on the floor to approve. Unless, unless there's questions about just understanding. If there's a question about just understanding proposal, I'll entertain those now. But then I'd like to get a motion so that we can discuss the pros and cons of proceeding. Okay, let's, I'd entertain a motion to approve the cost for services for the sewer system study as proposed.
Move.
Support.
Or.
Okay. Discussion. I'll, I'll start a little bit. My, my sense is that this is an important step in putting the puzzle together so that we efficiently and effectively spend our money going forward to make improvements and are in a better position to, as a city, to manage our, our, our systems. I also think that, that this work puts us in a posi, a much stronger position to not only get permitting for anything that we may want to do in the future as it relates to state permitting, but also, I think, in a much stronger position for obtaining grants to fund those improvements that, that we talk about. So that we'll have real data, we'll have, we'll have substantive proposals for grant funding. I think this is, as proposed, is an excellent step in putting the city in, in a proactive position to, to manage our, our sewer system. So that's, that's my two cents. Questions and comments from others? That's Mayor McConnell.
Thank you. I do want to applaud the city and OHM and everyone for continuing to progress on these, the study, and so that we can make the improvement. So thank you for that. Mine are just, I guess, some jargony technical questions. It references software PCSWMM. Can you just, in layman's terms, explain why maybe that's the best practice or the, the best for the hydraulic modeling?
I'm going to probably kick that to Val. I think that's PC Swim, that's a software we use.
Yes, it is. So the swim part stands for stormwater management model. And PC is, is just the, the vendor of the software. There are a number of different hydraulic modeling software packages that, that could be used. This is the, it, it's free to, to communities. So if and when we were to turn the model, hydraulic model over to the city, you would be able to access, operate, and run the model free of charge to you. So that's, that's the key reason why PC Swim was selected, was for the, the free aspect. And it, it, the functionality is very similar to the proprietary software that you would have to pay for.
Okay, so you're, you're saying this is one of the best practice models to use, softwares to use?
Correct. There's three main ones that are used. Info Swim, which is very costly. Then there's PC Swim and EPA Swim, which is a stormwater management model developed by the EPA. PC Swim and EPA Swim are essentially identical. So, yes.
Okay, and then in the task for flow metering, it says that instead of deploying and maintaining a separate rain gauge for the study, that the Gross Point Park rain gauge will be used. So is it a tipping bucket rain gauge or a weighted rain gauge? Do we know?
That's a great question. I do not know the answer to that, but we will find out and let you know next meeting.
So just to make sense of that, as I understand it, the, the tipping buck gives a better resolution. So just would advocate that if we, if, if we can use that, even if we have to do a temporary one, that, that we consider doing. And then just to follow up on the level of service discussion, you know, what I always talk about is surveys. So I would really love if we could incorporate a survey into that conversation and consider doing door-to-door. Man, not everybody's going to be online. You know, not everybody's going to come to a meeting. So I would love to see if we could strengthen that outreach with both a survey and/or door-to-door, whatever it is, that we can get as many residents in that conversation as possible. And let's see. So just to follow up on that, the line item for that is $12,000. So can you just elaborate a little bit more?
That'll be the public engagement. Task 6.
So, so task 6, I think in a general term, it, it involves definitely holding meetings, launching, exactly as you say, surveys or, or ways for us to gather that feedback. You know, I think our thoughts were we could do a website or, you know, potentially set up work groups. Really, and it's a matter of how the community feels that we can best capture that. Now, if a work group is perhaps maybe not going to capture certain aspects of the population, I think we can definitely work with, with administration on making sure that we have the best way to do that. I think there's, there's a definite geographic interest to make sure we're having feedback from all portions of the city. Because, you know, as, again, we're looking at a citywide sewer model, so we want to make sure that all areas are, are, the voices are heard. But at the same time, we also want to capture, you know, all, all types of residents, to make sure that we have all those voices, you know, about, about what's, what's acceptable and what's not.
And then, so the cost, the project cost does not include the flow meters, correct?
Correct.
So do we need to incorporate that into whatever we approve?
No, what, what we would recommend is, as we get into the, this phase of the study, we have already taken a preliminary pass at where we think the meters should go. But we want to go out in the field and verify those locations and make sure they make sense. Because we want to make sure those are locations that are accessible. Because we will go and collect data typically on a monthly basis. So if it's in the middle of Jefferson, it's probably not the best spot for it. But if there's a spot that's in a greenbelt area, that may be more safe. And then we've also proposed, just because this is a, you know, it's a, it's a significant item that we go out to bid for that. There are at least three vendors that would bid at this type of work. And we mentioned, what we don't know right now is which ones of these meters we want to be temporary and which ones do we want permanent? As we learn more about the model, we may determine that there are some meters that we want to make permanent. We want to tie that into a SCADA system. So as an operator, they know where levels are within the system. So if, if a relief valve is valuable, but we need to know what the elevation of the water is within the sewer and in the storm system at the same time, having those meters in place allow that operator to make that decision. And when you think about these storm events, the city is, is fairly compact. So it only takes sometimes an hour, an hour and a half for that peak event to hit. From the start of when the rain happens to when that peak event happens. And so there's not a lot of time in many cases to make that decision. So having that data readily available to the minute is going to be important. So we'll know that, and then as part of our bid, to kind of have those options already included in there so that we can present those to council and, and present the best path forward for, for that investment.
Great, and then.
I would just say, while we don't have to approve it, because we don't, we don't have a specific proposal, I think
Sure.
council should consider that the implication is, as, as they said in, in the certifications and assumptions section, that at some point we'll, we'll be asked to approve on the order of $75,000 to $90,000 for flow metering. So we should consider that as we're, we're doing this, but we don't have to actually take action on it.
Correct.
Thanks. And then in the future phases, it referenced permit and construction. And, and so is that specific to the emergency release valve? Or what's the permit and construction, what's permit for and construction of?
It, it could include that. That's one of the things that is to be determined. So it could include that. It could also include, we may find through modeling that it makes sense to put in a section of bypass sewer that opens up all sorts of additional capacity. We don't know at this point. But that would be part of that next phase.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Just briefly, I, I agree with you, Mayor Denner, that this, the study positions us well, and with Councilmember McConnell and applauding administration in pursuing this. But one of the, you know, and we, we've already touched on this a little bit in the meeting, but the resiliency of our, this is just for the Gross Point Park system. So the resiliency of our system is really only as good as the resiliency of the GLEWA system in terms of our sanitary system. So we, the parallel discussion is the earlier discussion we had with Suzanne Coffey and her team, because we can do all of, everything on this study and, and have the, the best results. But if we aren't getting what we need from GLEWA, then we still have the same problem, correct?
I'll make one quick comment for Patrick, something Councilmember Reed that Suzanne and I talked heavily about is, you know, GLEWA does have several of their lines that do go through Gross Point Park and is part of our sanitary modeling. You know, we want to be able to incorporate that data into our model, knowing the system. And this is something that we're in the very early stages of. But it looks like there could be a partnership or potentially some work done by GLEWA on our behalf to install some flow meters in their lines, which would obviously help GLEWA, but also gives us real-time data in Gross Point Park.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Councilmember Rowland.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I really just want to say thank you to, to Patrick and Valerie and City Manager Seisland. This has been so much more thorough, more transparent, and more engaging than anything we saw with our post-2016 flood response and communication. There's a famous line that says, "All eyes are on me," but all eyes are on you guys for this. So we really all eyes are on you guys for this. So we really appreciate this level of community engagement. So I just want to say thank you and and appreciate the updates. Keep coming. Good luck.
Thanks. I think with that, we should call the question to the motions on the floor to approve. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodge.
Yes.
Bradstone.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Donner.
Yes, motion passes. It's been approved. So have at it and move swiftly.
Thank you very much. We will be reporting to you, I'm sure, quite often.
Okay, thank you. Working on nine ten, I'd like to go through a few more agenda items, but at some point I suspect we're going to need a little short recess. So we'll see if we can get a couple more agenda items in before we do that. If that's okay with everybody. The next, we move now into move into new business. And the first bit of new business is the American Rescue Plan Funding, which is their federal funding and the portion that comes to Gross Point Park. We've discussed this in general terms quite a bit, the previous meetings, the total funding available to the city is something round numbers, one point one million, but it comes to us in two pieces. One in twenty twenty one and one in twenty twenty two. And so the focus of this report and approval of the allocation relates to the first chunk of funding based on our our current priorities. So with that, I'll ask the city manager to continue to introduce the topic.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Donner, members of council. So before you tonight is a recommended expense allocation by the administration regarding the first half of the American Rescue Plan Funding, as the mayor stated. These are covering expenses expenditures beginning March third, twenty twenty one. So anything before then, American Rescue Plan dollars cannot be spent on. And these funds must be obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. I don't doubt that we will spend much closer than that. Allowable uses include the following: a response to public health emergency, provide premium pay for essential workers within caps, government services to the extent of revenue lost and necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband. Prohibited uses of these funds are pension contributions through Plenching Budget Stabilization Fund, rainy day or similar reserves, legal settlements and outstanding debt. And so before you tonight, these are simply just some recommendations that, you know, obviously we'll be happy to hear council sense of where they'd like to see this first half a dollar spent. But the first proposal I had is fifty thousand dollars for businesses impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic that are outside of the Tax Increment Finance Authority and Downtown Development Authority. This would be, for example, at the corner of Mac and Cadu, those businesses along there, Fairfax Market and a couple of businesses that are just outside of Tifa on Mac Avenue. So certainly we want to be able to provide a grant program similar to Tifa and DDA to help those businesses out. The next one I was proposing was fifty thousand dollars for the Mac Avenue Corridor Project. This is in concert with Gross Point Farms, Gross Point City, City of Detroit, Wayne County and the Eastside Community Network. This was actually done by McKenna Associates, our planning service that we're utilizing right now. This project encompasses Connor to Cadu in Detroit to Gross Point Park and from Cadu to Maras in Gross Point Farms. The recommendations are to improve the streetscape and the business sections of these corridors on both sides of Mac Avenue for marketing and business support. Additional support funds with Wayne County ARPA allocations will be determined. And the combined request sent by City Manager Peter Dame of Gross Point City on behalf of all of us to the county was ten to fifteen million dollars. And so what each community was doing was setting aside a potential commitments that they could provide for funding. And then hopefully the county would be able to provide approximately ten to fifteen million dollars. So some areas are allocating more than others. But that'll be something that will wait upon further determination from the county. Certainly an idea if that's something you'd like to pursue. And this is going to be a multi-year project. And then the rest of the allocation, which is close to five hundred thousand dollars would be for the investments in water sewer infrastructure improvements in the park. Including but not limited to, we do have to work on our lead service line replacement as required by the state of Michigan. You just heard the CCTV program for sewer lines, instrumentation, which is those flow meters, smoke testing and funds for maintenance and or deficiencies that we need to fix. And so all I'm asking for tonight is approving this recommendation. But would happy to be happy to hear your comments or suggestions or other ideas that we'd like to allocate those dollars towards. So with that said, open the floor.
Council, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you. I'm happy to see this on the agenda because we've been talking about it for a little while. I'm also appreciative that you listen to some of my suggestions as well as my colleagues as it relates to business support outside the Tifa as well as to support the infrastructure upgrades. So thank you for that, I apologize for that. I am concerned, however, about the Mac Avenue Corridor, whether that meets the criteria for the rescue fund dollars. It doesn't seem to, at least just at first glance. I also would rather consider those dollars again, supporting additional infrastructure upgrades and or, as I referenced earlier in the meeting, helping reimburse residents who are going to have to make some do some things to mitigate storm impact on their homes. So, thank you.
Our customer fluid.
I have the same thought, actually. I'm, you know, I've I've been asking for a while if we can give COVID support to those businesses on Mac. So I'm very happy to see that we did find a way to do that and you were able to include that. The streetscape project to me doesn't seem to fall. I guess to me, it would not, it would not be a priority considering the infrastructure needs that we have. And then I'm not sure, even if it is something we wanted to do, that it falls strictly within the guidelines that were that are set out as being requirements for that funding. So I'm I'm skeptical that it's that it's even allowable.
Just to comment on that real quick to Councilmember Fluids and McConnell, this is something that when it was proposed, you know, we've had conversations with the Wayne County Economic Development section, and this is something that, you know, myself and the other Gross Point City Managers who have been working on this project were, you know, asking that similar question of within those guidelines, how does it fit within there? Because obviously we want to be compliant with within these federal dollars. And their response is that it would fit under number one of the negative economic impacts. However, you know, I could certainly see where that can be construed as probably a stretch potentially because what this project would be more so is for, you know, streetscape facade improvements and other, you know, we'll we'll call it, we'll call it the infrastructure of the sidewalks and the areas of mirroring Detroit and the fellow gross points. So just wanted to let you know of that. I apologize, Councilmember McConnell, not saying it right away after that.
I've got, I've got just a, just another comment related to that. My understanding from talking to the city manager is that the other gross points involved in in this, in this area, the farms and the city are allocating a considerable share of their American Rescue Plan dollars to the effort, much, much greater sure than we are now. I don't know why they they've chosen to do that, but my understanding is that that's the direction that they're going. And in order to keep Gross Point Park a part of that team, I think that the administration is suggesting that we have at least a nominal participation. It, in fact, it is a a multi-jurisdictional cooperative effort. And the county is looking for tangible evidence that the multi jurisdictions are all on board. And pushing forward before they are interested in considering allocating allocating funds. So if we're interested in getting county money, particularly, you know, as we look at the Detroit streetscape across from Gross Point Park, at least some, some participation may be viewed favorably by the county. That's just a little background based on my research that I'll share with you. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I have similar questions and I understand what the mayor, the mayor is saying. But this project, we were already participating in before there was any opportunity for these American Rescue Plan dollars, correct?
That is correct.
So refresh our, like, how we we were finding another way in the budget, another area in the budget to participate, or we had not yet reached the budget discussion in the the Mac Avenue plan.
We hadn't reached that discussion yet. This is something that's been a multi-year project, working with the multiple communities and then having that discussion with Wayne County. This was something that they presented that we could actually use with their ARPA funding for this. So at that time, each of the communities in the ECN in Detroit, we we were not readily available yet to work on this budget yet. So this was one of those, we were given, you know, very quick deadline to turn around. And so we just submitted a preliminary cost. But yes, long story short, we were not at these stages yet until the deadline from the county was less than a week.
Okay. So I guess what I'd like to know from administration is in order for us to be part of the Mac Avenue Corridor Project, do you need us to commit these funds?
So this is so early in in its infancy stage that if council were to ask that maybe that fifty thousand dollars would be allocated towards another area. This is something that we do not know when they'll actually reward those funds from the county. So this could be something that maybe could be a potential that we could do within the next allocation in twenty twenty two. So at this time, right now, we don't have to. It's something for your consideration if you want to. I just kind of wanted to throw that option at the table. It's so it's in such an infancy stage. You know, I just wanted to at least put in there that we might be able to provide some support in collaboration when the county's reviewing these.
Okay, so then I guess I I have the same concern or thought that Councilmember McConnell and Floyd do. And that is, and and I don't know if you've answered this question or the city attorney can, but if there's a way to have some type of rebate to residents or assistance to to residents out of these funds for something like downstop disconnection, is that permissible under the American Rescue Plan Funding? And if so, is that something that we could pursue? I mean, it might actually entice, you know, residents to pursue that and get us what we need in terms of that disconnection.
It's something that, you know, the city attorney and I can definitely take a look at and, you know, within the language there, but certainly that could be an opportunity we could pursue.
Thank you.
That probably at least loosely falls under investments in water and sewer infrastructure. So whether or not it becomes a separate line item, it could be included, it seems to me in that, within that context. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been listening to the conversation. I've studied this. My observation of the Mac Avenue Corridor Project, that project has been around for a long time. As I recall, they had some representatives do presentation to city council some time ago. My observation is, is I've seen no improvement on Mac Avenue from those funds and from that project between Alter Road and Cadu. Quite frankly, for a number of months, I've been wondering what's been going on. Has there been any action? And I have seen none. So that concerns me. I'm thinking too, perhaps some alternatives to the administration's suggestion on the fifty thousand dollars. Including, I guess, what could be used is premium pay for essential workers. We have essential workers in the city, done a great job through all of this. And maybe, I've checked the city attorney on this. Can some of these funds be attributed to Tifa? For infrastructure projects and what have you? Or maybe somebody else can speak to that as well.
So yes, for the essential, you know, worker, something that we have thought of is for our our public works department. Public safety was provided hazard pay as part of the COVID nineteen program. So yes, you are right, Councilmember Robson, that could be something we could consider. Regarding your question with Tifa, was your question relation to could Tifa spend those dollars for the
Well, no. If we go, going into the Tifa General Fund for such things as sewer and infrastructures.
Oh, oh, yes. No, that's something that, you know, the Tifa could look to use as well. You know, there is budget line items for residential and business improvements within the Tifa District. And so, you know, for example, some of those could be, you know, potential alley separations within the within the Tifa in other areas for water and sewer work. So, yes.
Well, there you go. Where do you go from here?
Okay, listening to this discussion, it would appear that there's considerable considerable agreement on the priorities presented on the first item for the business program and the last item on first water and sewer infrastructure, but some questions about appropriateness of including the Mac Avenue. And I think we're going to have to formalize our position on that either, either in or out. My sense of counsel is mixed right now. But I'd like to kind of focus that discussion on that so that we can decide if that, for recommending that in or out. And Councilmember Hodges, you have your hands up.
Yes, I may have something to add to that that would help get us to a decision. I serve on the Eastside Community Network and the Mac Avenue Business Association. So those reports have been coming regularly. I think it's it's the, it's actively in the planning stages and now moving into figuring out implementation. And that whole corridor certainly is a big lift. So when you've heard discussion about the formation of a corridor improvement authority and other tools to help leverage to move that streetscape planning along and to bring the resources to the table that are necessary to implement, that's all tied to the same endeavor. So there is active engagement by each of our gross point peers that touch Mac Avenue as well as the city of Detroit and all the leadership being provided at the Eastside Community Network to make this a reality. So this would be an opportunity to leverage dollars and stretch our dollar by contributing to this effort. Now with that, and and also to be collaborative and part of a partnership. But with that said, we, I would certainly never want to do that if it's not in compliance. So perhaps the city manager's suggestion that we wait until twenty twenty two when it's not in such a nascent stage and it's, and we have a little more information and we can explore that further is a wise one. So with that, then my only other additional comment to help us make a decision as it relates to what other investments we might do is just to keep in mind that in the coming years, we're going to have a lot of underfunded liabilities. So the more we can relieve the general fund, you know, rather than Tifa and others of expenditures, so we maintain fund balance and add to it. I think that would be smart. So again, that's just a strategic thought, not necessarily substantive one that has a suggestion to it. But I think something we should think about, that the more we can do budget relieving measures for the general fund, the happier we'll be in a few years when we're faced with those liabilities.
Okay, would anyone on council like to make a specific recommendation related to the the Mac Avenue line item? Okay, so that that leaves it in. Councilmember Reed.
Yes. Do you want me to make a motion? Are you asking for a motion? Or are you asking for just a suggestion?
I think a recommendation that we can take a straw vote on.
So my recommendation would be for this phase of our American Rescue Plan Funding to take the Mac Avenue allocation out of administration's recommendation and add in instead some type of, assuming it it meets the requirements and permitted uses under the American Rescue Plan Funding, some type of assistance to residents, or we're going to help the businesses, help the residents and allocate the majority of it to our water and sewer infrastructure.
Okay, sense of counsel, is this what counsel would like to do?
Yes.
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 Okay, let's.
Requesting a clarification from Councilmember Reed. Could you repeat your suggestion one more time?
My recommendation would be that we direct administration to allocate our first installment of the American Rescue Plan funding, the $50,000 for businesses outside of Tifa and DVA, $50,000 for residents, for assistance to residents with. My thought is down about disconnection, but in a broader sense, of water and sewer infrastructure. And then the third allocation that almost $500,000 as administration has recommended for investments in water and sewer infrastructure improvements.
Why don't you convert that to a motion? Would you move?
I would so move.
Is there support for that? Any further discussion before we declare? Call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner? Can I ask who supported that motion?
I think it was.
People spoke.
I think it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes to approve as amended the allocation of the American Rescue Plan dollars. It was that was a good discussion. It was it was, I think, productive and I appreciate council's engagement on that. And I think our residents will appreciate the idea that was put forth and quickly adopted. So let's move forward. The next is the recycling extension that was touched on in the manager's report, but we are required to take action. Now let the city manager introduce.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So with me as well is Matthew Nod, who is our representative. He helped facilitate this bid with Gross Point City, Gross Point Shores and Gross Point Farms. As all these gross points were looking at recycling services. So Matt will touch into the meat of this process and how this all went. I'll give you a summary currently of what the recommended, you know, cost would be to the residents and per year. Right now, Green for Life is charging about $8.71 per billing cycle, totaling $52.20 per homeowner annually. On July 1, GFL increased the rate to 995, going to 59.70 annually. As a result of the recent bid process, Green for Life was awarded the bid in the amount of $11.20 per billing cycle totaling $67.20. So that would be about a $7.50 increase annually to all homers for two years with options for years three, four, and five. With that said, I'm going to let Matthew Nod go ahead and take it away. And Matt, go ahead. Thank you, city manager, and good to be there, council. I'm in Ann Arbor and just from my background, I was the sustainability lead for the City of Ann Arbor for about 17 years. So with this bid, there's a couple of new items. In this bid, you're getting two household hazardous waste events. And we've talked with GFL and one of those, and it'll be up to the communities to decide, but one of those can be traditional household hazardous waste event like you've been getting in the past. You can either do a second one or they're recommending considering an e-waste and paper shredding event for the communities. This is the fourth of the Gross Point community meetings I've attended. And the e-waste seems to resonate with some council members, and so there seems to be an interest in that. What, you know, the market for recycling has gone a bit upside down, but is returning. And so we were in the unfortunate situation that there was only one bidder. We did reach out directly to two of the major providers and Tara and Waste Management. And following up with them, only one responded to our request as to why they did not bid on this. And I think with COVID, they're having trouble like a lot of other service providers with staffing. And they said they weren't going to bid on a service that they couldn't, you know, service well. So hopefully we'll recover from that soon. The other benefit is the original RFP was going out for a five-year term with a five-year option to renew. GFL has agreed to a two-year term, so that puts you in a position where if for some reason in two years, the markets returned and there may be more favorable conditions, you can consider going out to bid again rather than waiting, being locked in for five years. You're also getting a GFL has a new incentive program that they value at 35 cents a household. And I can't verify that. That's what they said in their bid. But that's an incentive program for recycling that would be available to your residents. And they've also agreed to a stronger education program with mailings and a willingness to come to public events. So if you're interested in having them come to your council meetings, whether you have an environmental commission and report back to you on how the program is working, they're welcoming the opportunity to do that. So with that, maybe I'll stop and let you ask any questions.
Questions or clarifications? Councilmember Fluid, who, by the way, is chair of our Sustainability Subcommittee of Council.
I am, thank you. No, the only question I really have, and I understand they were the only bidder, but we've had so many complaints about recycling being tossed in with regular trash. That kind of comes around every every couple of months or so. And it was something we wanted to address when this contract went out to bid again. Do we have any sense that this is an ongoing issue that, you know, recycling companies are doing this? Because recycling is just not profitable right now. Do we have any any leverage over this to ensure that our recycling is actually going where it's supposed to go?
Right. I can't speak to what GFL is actually doing. I have heard in especially in rural communities where you don't have a significant contractor and people just are looking in the phone book for recycling and trash collection. That's what happens in most townships. And they are watching garbage trucks picking up recycling. Again, I can't say what GFL is doing with your recycling. What I can say, and your city attorney, who's a lawyer, can review the RFP, which will be attached to the contract as part of the contract. There are, it is a requirement as part of the IRP that the material that is collected for recycling is actually recycled. Turns out some communities did not have that written into a contract. And when the market went upside down, their vendors said, well, we're not required to. So we're going to put it in a landfill. And many of you may know, but it's incredibly cheap to throw away things in Michigan. It's a longer story, but we don't really have the same economic incentives that other communities have. It's just so cheap to landfill stuff here that the, you know, Toronto sends their garbage to Michigan. It's so cheap. So the other thing is there are liquidated damages. So were there to be broken glass in the street from a recycling truck? Were they to be caught not recycling the material? That is written as a term in the RFP, which they have accepted. And again, I'll let your city attorney review that and kind of give you any legal advice. But this is a RFP that we've used in other communities to kind of try and capture that very those elements. So hopefully you're in a much better legal position where you define that the vendor is not providing the services that they committed to.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions before we put a motion on the floor? Let's put a motion on the floor to accept the bid recommendation as described. I'll accept that motion, a motion to that effect.
I'll support.
Well.
Make a motion.
So I saw Councilmember Rayland raise his hand to make the motion. Councilmember Fluid supported before he could complete his.
I thought you made the motion, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's quite all right. So we're going to let Councilmember Rayland make the motion. Councilmember Fluid, support.
I motion to accept the recycling big recommendation as presented.
Councilmember Fluid, I believe, supports it. Any discussion before we call a question? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. You know, I have to say that it's frustrating in this area because just as we learned today, there are so few providers. The market has not been very helpful in this regard. And it's very difficult to get competitive, competitive bids. So it's it's sort of a rock and a hard place problem if you want to recycle. And and I think that our community is definitely committed to recycling as as are the other gross points. But I do appreciate the the terms and things that that Matt, you identified in response to Councilmember Fluid that are included specifically in the RFP that has been accepted. So if we have problems in the future, we're in a better spot. So I appreciate that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we okay to keep going? We're okay to keep going. We're tough. Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This was touched on earlier as well, that adoption of this plan puts us in a in a position to in the future be able to get FEMA funding for for us in the county. But I will let the administration introduce this topic. There's fair amount of information here.
Thank you, Mayor Denner and members of council. So I'm going to thank the help of Deputy Chief Bostock and former Chief Pallone, who were assisting in this process with Wayne County. As you did state, that if passed tonight, this plan would allow us to be able to apply for FEMA dollars. Right now, that there's approximately 51 million allocated for the state of Michigan. That could be incorporated for street flooding management and other educational items, you know, that'd be helpful for Gross Point Park. And so the plan itself was about 350 pages. So I didn't want to print that off for each council member. So I hope you were okay with the link. As well, for those in the public, it's available in your in the packets on the city website. So the plan was completed with the assistance of the Wayne County Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, representatives and leaders from the Wayne County Communities, Michigan State Police Management Division, mitigation, recovery, and numerous other stakeholders. The plan was prepared by an advisor committee of all those, including public work staff, emergency response personnel, school representatives, elected officials, interested business owners and regional agency leaders who provide evaluation and assessment and assisted with community outreach and plan adoption. The goal of this hazard mitigation is to reduce loss of life and property from hazards that occur in the county by protecting the health, safety, and economic interests of its residents. And so a couple of those that are incorporated into this plan are everything from flood plane management, emergency power backup policies and programs of cost recovery, winter hazards, transportation accidents, terrorism, hazmat flooding, temperature fluctuations, so extreme cold or extreme heat and how to manage those, drought and civil disturbance. Related to Gross Point Park within this plan is more along the discussion of the FEMA flood plane management. So approximately about two or three years ago, the City of Gross Point Park was working on a multi-year plan to get out of the proposed flood plain that FEMA was going to put Gross Point Park back into. So this was something that was done over a two or three-year period. And now at this time, Gross Point Park only has a couple homes along Windmill Point Park and Whittier that are in that flood plain. However, as initially proposed by FEMA, most of south of Jefferson would have been in that flood plain management. So this actually allowed for those residents to not have to purchase flood insurance that would have cost numerous dollars to those, you know, for flood planes. So this is lap overrun of Lake St. Clair. This is not related to, you know, street flooding. This is if Lake St. Clair were, you know, because of high water levels, would do wave run up into that. And there's actually pretty fascinating modeling. You can go on FEMA's website and they're able to show you within the area. And I believe SEMCOG as well has those resources. So my recommendation for you tonight is that upon adoption of this plan, this is something that we can incorporate into our hazard mitigation in the future. And as well, we can aggressively look for federal dollars from FEMA. So with that said, I'll take any questions. Otherwise, I hope you consider adoption tonight.
One additional comment, Gross Point Park did participate in the development of this plan as well. In speaking with the city manager, our former Director of Public Safety, Steve Pallone, was our lead representative for emergency response and participated in all meetings and discussions and development of plans. So there was active Gross Point Park participation. With that, questions, comments? Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you. Yes, I did actually go through that 300-plus page document. And I did see Chief Pallone, our city manager Pallone, listed as participating. The only concern I have, page, it's page 135 in the report, that there is zero reference to, you know, storm events, water sewer infrastructure, any of those items. So I don't know, you know, I'm not trying to hold things up. I certainly want us to be able to pursue dollars. I'm just concerned that that's not referenced at all in this section about Gross Point Park. Is there something we can do to address that? Or is there some other place that it's addressed? I'm just curious.
So just to clarify, you're saying in regards to street flooding from storm events, correct?
Yeah, right. I mean, it does. There is a section that talks earlier in the report that does talk about, you know, storm events and the data went, you know, they tracked like a 10-year period and those kind of things. But then when we get to the mitigation section for Gross Point Park, there's no reference to that. And so I was just wondering, and obviously that is a big hazard that we need to mitigate. So I was just curious if if there's some way to incorporate that or if, I don't know. I mean, it's it's pretty generic. So I maybe it's not a big deal. But I'm just concerned that it's not referenced at all in the section.
Can I can I help with that, actually? Yeah, because I went through the whole thing, too. It was super fun. I had made a note of page 135 as well, because, you know, there are a million charts and graphs in this thing. But what we set as our three priorities were flood plain management, emergency power backup, and policies and programs, cost recovery. Now, this was written last year, right? So so initially I had said the same thing, like, can we can we change what our response was as far as, you know, input to the report itself, which might not be necessary because the very last thing on the document that we are approving tonight lays out our three priorities, which are based on page 135, which is what Councilmember McConnell is referring to. So we might not be able to change the report itself, but we could take A, B, or C out of our priorities and change one of those to what they refer to as either sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure, or urban flooding, which is what they differentiate urban flooding based on storm events from shoreline flooding. So I think as far as our priority list, you know, rather than changing the whole Wayne County report, we could change our piece of it, which is what we're voting on tonight, and and just change, you know, A, B, or C, one of our priorities to include that item.
I'll have to ask the city attorney how he reads it, but I read the introduction of those three priorities. So should give priority attention to following action items recommended in portions of the plan specific to Gross Point Park. So it's really mimicking what's in the plan. So I don't think we can retroactively change that. That's my read of it, but I think I don't think it would have any impact. Specifically, on the other hand, it is, it is general enough. I I I don't see any reason why we couldn't. Why we wouldn't incorporate that in in actual practice without trying to change the plan.
I guess the question would be, you know, this um resolution, part of the their mitigation plan document was just a a sample resolution. So in theory, you know, our resolution doesn't have to completely follow the sample that they gave us. It was a, it was a suggestion. So I don't know if that gives us any more leniency as far as making changes to it or not.
I suppose we could throw a a D in there as well as um.
Go ahead, hon.
I don't know. What would I don't think I'd change any of the ABCs because that's in the in the in the report, but maybe we could throw another priority in there for us to pay attention to. That wouldn't have noted it.
I would recommend to uh Councilmember Fluid, Mayor Danner, maybe we add a section D in there. Obviously, this plan was started back, you know, and adopted in twenty twenty. Priorities have changed. So maybe we could, you know, um, add a section D in there of, you know, the city's interest um in in mitigation.
I support that.
I would agree with that. I I think adding a D is better than replacing one of the existing. But I I don't think there's any harm in in adding the the section D to conform with the current priorities.
Okay. We don't have a motion on the floor yet, so we'll get a motion. We'll we'll in the motion, maybe propose that amendment, approach, propose that change in the emotion when we get to the motion. Okay, other questions or comments? Yes, uh, customer fluid, you have your hand up again.
Yeah, I had a couple of other other things as well. One was, um, it it indicates early on that representatives were asked to complete three online surveys with key stakeholders in their community. Um, was that done? Was that, was anybody else included, or was it primarily um Chief Poloney and and Lieutenant Bostock?
Um, excuse me. I do, I do recall um when this was being worked on, that it was more of an administrative function and that this is something that uh former Chief Poloney had worked on Jim Bostock. And I do believe there are some questions uh that went to my office as well in regards to, excuse me, um, our our water and sewer capabilities and such.
Okay, um, I noticed that when talking about things that municipalities can do for emergency management, it mentioned some of the things that residents have talked about um that Chief Gerald has talked about that I would like to see explored, which were you know, not complete reliance on the county, but that we do have those communications issues hashed out. I know Chief Gerald, you know, is working on that. That we sort of have a have a plan if we need to have cooling or warming centers, that we have a list of local volunteers and that we have a list of our vulnerable population. Those were things that were identified in this report that I think we've touched on all of those things already, but I wanted to point that out again. And then I had one more question, which was um, on page one eighty-two, it references a a very specific item, which was that we were exploring putting duckbill valves on some of the um residential drains on Edgemont Park. And I mean, that stood out to me. It was just, it was so specific. So I wanted to ask about it. Um, and ask if that's something we actually did, why we did it on Edgemont Park, and if duckbill valves are something that would help any of our other residents with their flooding issues.
Okay, so this jogged my memory. Thank you for that. So at the time, um, this so, you know, this the high water levels, you know, of Lake St. Clair were two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Gross Point Park was very similar to City of Detroit, Gross Point City, where we actually had some of our um infrastructure getting uh lake water. Uh, so lake water was running actually into our system uh in that what this valve would do is essentially act as a back, you know, check valve is the word I can use right now, but close that off so that we're not getting that infiltration into there. And I know this happened because Edgemont Park uh was actually getting, yeah, lake water through the storm drains. And so that is no, that is, that is no longer an issue from there.
Okay, so it was a very specific scenario.
Yeah, and that was something that was very specific just to Edgemont. Uh, I know Gross Point City had uh many challenges with a lot of its numerous uh lakefront um streets, but to my knowledge, and you know, it was Edgemont was the only one in the park at the time.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to uh adopt the uh resolution for the adoption of the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Oh, don't move. Go ahead, Member McConnell.
Yeah, either way.
Okay, any further discussion before we call a question? Councilor Reed, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just briefly, I I want to thank Councilmember Fluid for really taking a deep dive and bringing up all those points and I have nothing further to add.
Speaking of resilience.
I I think I think Council McConnell did as well.
McConnell as well. Councilmember Rowland, did you have something?
Yeah, I I thought we were gonna add an item D to this, just to make it more.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I know we're gonna add an item D for our priorities, just to make.
Let's uh, why don't you make a motion to add that, an amendment to amend our motion to add the item D.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to add an item D to our motion.
As as discussed for uh.
As discussed previously in this discussion.
Okay. I'll support that. Okay, let's uh, let's move ahead then and call the question first on the amendment. Um, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Haggis.
Yes.
Rapsin.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Uh, yes, uh, motion or amendment is adopted. Uh, now on the original motion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Haggis.
Yes.
Rapsin.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Uh, yes, uh, motion is adopted. Uh, we have adopted the resolution uh with the one amendment of the addition of uh the item D as discussed. So thank you, counsel. Um, it's now just about ten o'clock. I'm gonna call a short recess. Let's all be back here uh no later than ten after. It'll give us about a ten minute uh short recess. Uh, thank you, and we'll see you in ten minutes.
Thank you.
I see that we are all back and present, and I call the uh meeting back to order. Uh, we'll continue with the next agenda item, which is vacation of Wayburn and alley. I would ask the administration to uh introduce this, and I think the city attorney can explain what our job is tonight, which I think is fairly simple uh versus uh in the September meeting. So I don't know. Nick, are you gonna start this or the city attorney?
Uh, Jay can start it.
Okay, city attorney Hollitt, the the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. Uh, so tonight on the agenda, we have the introduction of a resolution to vacate Wayburn. And just to be clear, it it's per our charter, lays out the process for vacating a street or a public alley. And the first step in that is what we're taking tonight, which is to introduce it. There's no vote on it. There's no approval. We then set a meeting uh for four weeks' time, which generally coincides with uh our September meeting, at which point there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment, object, uh, and for this body to vote on the resolution. Uh, the resolution, if adopted in the future, would vacate portions of Wayburn Street and the adjacent alley um as part of the construction of the new DPW facility. Um, the area to be vacated currently uh is not, the the portion of Wayburn to be vacated is currently not a through street. It dead ends at MAC. Again, the adoption of the resolution and the introduction here is contemplated by the charter, which lays out the process uh for the vacation. Uh, I sent around earlier a slight modification to the resolution that was incorporated in the agenda. There was a clerical error in the legal description in Exhibit B, and so we've corrected that. That is the resolution we're asking that you adopt. Again, it's a clerical error. And in terms of the introduction, we will have the full resolution maps and other explanations made available to the public uh right away, um, so that they have an ample opportunity uh before the September meeting to review the resolution, the map of the vacation, and an opportunity to formulate their thoughts, objections, or comments prior to the vote.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just by way of way of clarification and to remind counsel how this fits in with the uh site plan for the new Department of Public Works, uh, the portion of um of uh Wayburn to be vacated will actually be incorporated into the uh, the Public Works um yard area and parking area. Um, and the portion of the alley to be uh vacated uh is also incorporated into the Public Works yard area. What it this does not affect is the alley that runs between um Wayburn and and Maryland, nor the connection of that alley to a cross alley that then connects to Maryland Street. So the the alley that runs from Gothie up to the existing alley between Wayburn and Maryland uh stays intact and the ability to turn right and then continue out into Maryland. So that's what this does not affect in terms of the alley when you look at the uh overall description. And then the portion of Wayburn it affects is that portion immediately adjacent to the uh proposed public service facility, the DPW garage. With that, I think that amounts to a to the introduction. You know, are there any questions or clarifications before we move on? This will become back on the agenda in September meeting for uh for comment and uh and and adoption. Uh, this then will support our ability to complete uh the uh the proposed deep, well, not so much proposed, the approved DPW garage on MACM. Uh, Councilmember Reed.
I mean, so we what we're doing here, and I think that the city attorney put this in his, you know, we we are by voting tonight adopting to put this before a public hearing in September for formal adoption. Is that correct?
My understanding is that there's no vote whatsoever tonight.
Right, there there's no need to vote. This is, it's almost like, think of like the um like I think of the federal government, right? And they have to publish their rules before there's comment and vote.
Right.
So this is essentially the the publishing of the resolution to then be commented and voted on at the September meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Uh, if there's no other uh questions or comments, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is uh actually somewhat related, and we uh do need to take action. Um, and I'll ask the uh city attorney, I think, to uh introduce this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is related. This is a proposed agreement with Huntington Bank. Huntington Bank has executed uh the agreement, and they fully agree with the terms uh that are presented to you for counsel. Obviously, the city cannot agree to it until approved by the council. This is an agreement with Huntington Bank uh related to the construction of the new DPW facility. Uh, it's being presented to you tonight for approval. The agreement contemplates and is in contingent on the vacation of Wayburn. Um, and and so as you see in the agreement, the the there are two principal parts to the agreement. One, when you vacate a street, the abutting property owners each own fifty percent of the real estate uh up to the midpoint of the public right of way. And so by virtue of this agreement, Huntington is deeding by quitclaim deed its interest in that fifty percent of Wayburn to the city of Gross Point Park. And then the second part of the agreement is Huntington Bank is granting us an easement on their property to construct a sidewalk so that there can be pedestrian access along that corridor to MAC Avenue. Um, neither one of those comes with any um real estate transactional cost. The consideration for that agreement was the city's agreement to pay uh for the the legal review on Huntington's side of the agreement, which is approximately twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, um, before we move on, I just a couple of comments uh on my part. One is that uh this, the twenty-five hundred dollars relates to the transaction cost of uh getting these rights. Okay, ultimately, ultimately, there will be a uh a cost to the city to uh to build the sidewalk, as pointed out in the earlier written comment. Um, the other thing is that the uh, the the public sidewalk that's uh identified here, if you can visualize, will fall between what is uh would be the uh the Wayburn Street right of way and the existing stormwater management uh retention area that's on Huntington Bank's property. Uh, so that it um Huntington was uh was happy to have us would was happy to uh cede our request to uh to to build this sidewalk because I think they believe that they understand it's in their interest as well for pedestrian access to MAC Avenue and easy access to their to their business as well as other businesses on MAC. So the this, this has been under negotiation by the administration for a number of months. Really, not much changed from the beginning of the negotiation, but we were dealing with a very large corporation. So things, when you deal with a large corporation, everything takes just a little more time. So that's why it's coming to you at this point. With that, uh, any questions or clarification before we go to motion and then discuss specific aspects of uh of approval, of approval? Questions or clarifications or comments at this point? Uh, Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it says twenty-five hundred dollars to cover, and I know Mr. Hollitt said approximate, uh, since we don't know. Can we put a cap on that? Uh, so if it goes up to seventy-five hundred, it comes back to council or something like some number like that, or do we not need to even address that?
I'm comfortable not addressing. Your point's well taken. I have it writing what their costs are essentially up to this point, and I can't imagine other than maybe another couple hundred dollars. They they've committed, I I say estimated because it's possible it exceeds that by some small amount, but they've essentially committed to that amount. That that's what got us to the point essentially we're at right now.
Thanks for explaining that.
Okay, uh, I'll uh accept a motion to uh approve the agreement between Huntington Bank and City of Gross Point Park to transfer property under vacated street and to provide an easement for the construction of a public sidewalk. Uh, is anyone?
Don't move.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Okay, um, any further discussion? I want to thank uh the administration and the city attorney for working hard on this and putting together an agreement, which I think is uh favorable to all parties and especially to the residents for their access to MAC Avenue. So with that, uh, call the question. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Haggis.
Yes.
Rapsin.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Uh, yes, motion passes. The agreement has been approved, so this uh, the city can now execute it. Moving on, um, at this point, I'll insert a council comment uh section for new business, which is our custom, but wasn't specifically called out in the uh, in the agenda. Is there any council comment on new business at this time? Councilmember Reed.
Mayor Danner, I probably should have brought this up during the storm progress report and sewer system study and really briefly, because those reports included discussions with the Gross Point Public School System. I would like to ask administration to include discussions with um our our faith organizations, in particular Saint Ambrose. They have um concerns, they have a lot of hardscape, and they have several buildings, and they have some concerns there. I'm, I I have heard that Saint Clair has had some issues. We have I'm not familiar with issues at the other churches at First Reform or Saint Paul, but um they all have, you know, a sizable piece of property. Um, so I would ask that you include discussions with those entities. And I I I can't think of any others off the top of my head, but I know the pastor at Saint Ambrose has put out some specific pleas because they had some serious damage, and they know that their fix is only as good as our fix. So and that's all I have.
I think that's good. Uh, the I I am aware the administration and Saint Clair are already in communication because Saint Clair is in Because St. Clair is embarking on a sidewalk paving project and is working with the city to make sure that their. Parking area is separated, so. That's one step I think what you raised about St. Ambrose we discussed, but really needs to happen. I agree. Any other council comment? I have one. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. I was just going to remind the community that the Gross Point Park Foundation is holding their annual fundraiser on September eleventh and. I'm sure they'd appreciate participation by all, and I understand at that event we'll also be honoring two people that are on the Zoom call. Yourself as well as Mayor Pro Tem Rapsen. So it's a chance to come out and celebrate your service as well as contributing back to our community.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Rowland.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for probably goes to Nick or Jake. Do all real estate transactions have to go through city council for approval?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to, I I I think the answer to that is yes. Any the charter requires that any contract. Be approved by the city over a certain threshold. And so I think any real estate contract like that, if it were the city purchasing the property, that would fall to the city.
Okay, okay. And it's just come to my attention from a few different sources that our city. Purchased almost an acre of land in Detroit in two thousand seventeen at Werner and Churchill or Werner and Alter. The former Pitters land. This property went for over three hundred thousand dollars. And it was involved with another agreement as well. Again, this was December of two thousand seventeen. There's no records of this on our city council meetings documenting any discussions or approvals. And all these agreements were signed by Bill tragedy actors, our former city manager. So I want to understand why wasn't this approved by city council? I can ask.
I don't think, I think Councilmember Rapsen and I are probably the only ones that could have been present at that that discussion. As I recall that. Or you, what's our two seventeen seventeen? Okay, you may have been there. My recollection is that that was discussed and and the closed door and then. But I but I can't, I can't guarantee that without having somebody do the research.
So if it was brought back to to open door, the the vote would have been in the minutes.
There would have been a vote in the minutes to approve what was discussed and closed door, so that I don't know.
So that's not in the minutes. My my big concern is why are we buying property in Detroit with our taxpayer money?
Well, we're not any, we're not anymore. That was a point in time and and I think going back in history. I'd rather I. It was what it was, but.
Do you remember what the purpose of that was?
Not specifically offline. We can kick that around a little bit.
All right, have we used it for any Nick? Do you know we're using it for anything?
That's in my knowledge, no.
I think I think that'll be property that we try to try to put up for sale again.
Okay, and then it was done under land contract. Which is baffling to me as well. And I'm wondering from the finance side, why we aren't, we're not seeing these payments on our financial reports every few months? Because they're over five thousand dollars.
It's actually part of the budget. So part of the fee is charged to water sewer and part of it, I believe, is in the capital improvement fund.
But it's property we're paying payments on. Why would it fall into these categories?
Well, one is the consulting agreement and the other was the purchase of the land. And I believe that's in the capital improvement fund and the other is in the water sewer fund.
All right, so if there's payments still over five thousand dollars, shouldn't that come to?
I think I think I think because this was a topic that we didn't have on the agenda. Why don't we ask the administration to research this particular item and then can get back to you so that. So we can have facts because I think right now it's it's late and we're speaking off the cuff. But this is a topic we can ask the administration to follow up on and get back to us.
Okay, I have some questions. I'll send them to city council and copy Nick or send them to Nick.
I think that'd be good. I think that'd be good. Thanks.
All right, it's very disturbing in my eyes, so thank you.
If you could, Councilmember Raylan, if you could copy me on those two, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Um. I I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but we. Found out a long time ago that we had spent money. Via the DDA. On Joe's Garage as well, which is also located in Detroit. And. Apparently, we also own twelve ninety six alter and twelve sixty four alter. So. I have the same question. Why is the city buying property in Detroit or why did we buy property in Detroit?
Okay, let's again, let's refer that to administration to research and get and get back to us with specifics.
It also sounds like you guys have information that you're referring to is to aid us in looking back in time. I would appreciate seeing what you guys are looking at. I think that would be that would be helpful to understand the transactions.
I'm I'm looking at the list that, which I didn't. I should have picked up on it a year ago, but. I had asked the city manager last year to compile a list for me of all the city owned properties. And I didn't realize until today that there were. Properties on Alter. I didn't look at it that carefully. And so that's when I went back and looked at that and I saw the two properties on Alter. I I mean, I would like to know why the city was buying property. In Detroit. And I mean, we're talking about those two properties I know were two thousand eight. They were bought at the same time or within a month of each other. But. I know the city manager was not around, but. Some of the members of council were. And you don't recall, because my my bigger question is the bigger picture, which is why not just these two specific properties and not just the Pitters property? Why would we buy property in Detroit with city money? And you guys don't recall that?
I would like to make sure that we've got all our facts right before I try to recall based on memory. What it's, the information will be forthcoming. I just would like to get it. Get it organized and and researched so that we are accurate.
Do you know off the top of your?
And I'll participate with the administration with what what I can recall and. We'll see if we can put together what exactly occurred and when and why.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll share share the details that I have once I can grab grab those.
That'd be real helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman McCall.
Just. Survey night. So I just wanted to ask, because we haven't heard for some time about the communication survey we had talked about. A while back. I'd see there's another communicator going out. Would've been nice to have that in there. So I don't know. If we're still going to do that or what the status is, but I just wanted to. Bring that up, so.
I think communicator, the administration can respond and communicate.
Yeah, and so that's with the timing of this communicator, when it had to go out. You know, the administration put together its parks and rec information. There's a lot of events going on here in the fall that they wanted to get out and obviously towards the end of the season with the summer. And then we also put in there about the storm information and such. So. I wanted to be able to dedicate, you know, some more time in working with the communications committee as well on crafting that for the other communicator that will be in the fall. The next one.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Mayor Pro Tem.
May I have? This is a council comment for the last time delay.
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure. Just three things. First of all, I want to recognize and express. Appreciate appreciation too, and I know I speak for the council and the administration for the. The service of retiring Detective Mike Narduzzi. Retired this past Friday. Mike, we thank you so much for your service and and your great work in many of the cases that you closed. And we wish you well. In your endeavors with the city of Gross Point. Thank you very much. Also, to the administration, I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. St. Paul has been resurfaced. But school is around the corner and hopefully somebody's working on. Putting safety notices back on on St. Paul, school zone type zones. Type notices. You know, Nick, if they're on that or they're about to repaint.
That's something I'd have to check back on with the public, the public works.
I I appreciate. A lot of mention about DTE concerns, anxieties, just as a suggestion, maybe. Like Great Lakes Water Authority, we could have somebody from GT come to the next council meeting. That would be helpful. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Reed, you have your hand up.
Yes, just real briefly, because it came up with, I think with the summer storm events. We've sort of put some things on hold, like the communications committee and the ordinance review. So I just sort of wanted to put that out there. That I'd like to get with the city manager and get on track with some of the things that we've put. On hold that in the city attorney too. We've been talking about some ordinances that we need to address, so. I know you're still slammed, but I wanted to get that on the radar.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? I've got one item. Oh, Councilman Ron.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for City Clerk. Jane, I was wondering when the absentee ballots are going to be mailed out or. Scheduled.
We are anticipating like September twenty fourth. So we're going to start processing all the applications. We have to wait till we get the ballots in before we can assign the ballot number to the actual voter. So we're hoping to send them out by September twenty fourth, but I can let everybody know if that date changes within three or four days of that. If it's anticipated earlier, I'll just let everybody know.
Thank you, thank you. And I see on our website, we have an election election area on our website, so that's really helpful as well. Go ahead, if you have more to add.
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. And this is for for city manager size and I know we've been talking about the safe routes to school. I was wondering if there's an update on the stop signs that we're going to get installed? If the bump outs have been added to Churchill around the school system and if the stop bars have been painted at all the stop signs?
So I just talked with Chief Gerald about the stop signs and that's something he's working with Public Works right now on ordering more of those signs. And we're actually working on getting a sign machine as well, being able to make, which will help us out a lot and actually reduce costs. So that's something. That's going to be really helpful, especially if you look at our street signs right now. You know, that's another project we need to get into because some of them are worn out. We need to work on. I will have to check back on the stop bars. I know we did have a discussion that. We actually had due to shortages of supplies, the actual paint for it, but that should actually be in here now. We were having problems of actually getting that paint where if you used improper paint, every couple cars would wear it off, so. That should be in progress and something I can check back with the chief and DPW on then.
The last one was the bump outs, the bump out. The bump outs we planned for around Churchill.
Yeah, and so. Yeah, this was something that was part of the Safe Frost to Schools application that the Gross Point Public School System submitted. I know that there was comment back and forth between the state and the the school district and ourselves, so we're actually going to have to get a meeting together of the city, the school district and the state. To hash out some of those comments that they brought to us. So. At this time, do I have a date? No, I don't. But it's something that, you know, we're continuously working on and we're still very interested in those bump outs, improving safety in those areas.
Okay, because the one, the corner of Nottingham and Churchill. On pier, on the corner of Pierce was just redone, re-cemented a couple of months ago, two months, within the last two months, I believe. So so one of the residents thought they were going to be adding the bump out at that time since they were doing it. But when I drove by, it doesn't look like they did that.
So that might have been, I would guess, probably DTE might have done something there.
Okay.
But no, it's good question. I'll. Okay.
Yeah, school starting September seventh, so if the at least the stop signs for safe routes can be up as a priority. And again, I know you've got a ton of stuff going on, but we can get those just for the kids that are traveling to schools.
Yeah, I'll I'll work with Chief Gerald on getting those. Thank you, Councilmember Raylan.
Thanks, thanks, Nick. I appreciate it.
Okay, see, no more hands. It'll be my turn. I wanted to announce to to council and to and to the public that there will be some appointments to be made at our September meeting. There are two positions. With terms ending on the Downtown Development Authority. Those are four year terms and I'll be addressing those in the. The September meeting. There are two positions on our planning commission with terms ending. And those are three year terms. And also, there is one position on the Board of Review. That's come available with the resignation of one of the members of the Board of Review. And so I'll be looking at possibly addressing that. In September, although the Board of Review isn't active at all this time of year, so we may defer that a little bit and leave it open. Since there is an alternate on the Board of Review. But I wanted to encourage us to. Encourage the public, if you're interested to submit an application, and I would ask the administration to put something on our website highlighting that. Those positions will be addressed. In September. Councilman Reed.
Mayor, there won't there also be an appointment for the newly created Downs Pout Disconnection Appeal Board?
Actually, there will be. I forgot about that one. I actually have a note on that as well. Now that we have the Downs Pout. Appeal Board, I'll be addressing that as well. Thank you. And that, as I recall, includes one citizen representative, so it'll be important to get that publicized so that we can identify. A resident that would be interested in participating in that appeal board. Okay, with that, I will close council comment on new business. And we'll move to public comment, non agenda items. City Manager Sizemore. If you would manage this this section.
I yes, Mayor Danner, I have no written public comment and I'll ask the public if there's any spoken public comment at this time. If you could please raise your hand.
Can you hear me?
Oh. Hold on. Could that resident raise their hand, please?
I I don't see the hand raise signal. This is Dick Schroder.
Okay, Mr. Schroder, give me one second to share the timer. And just give me one moment here, please.
Yeah, I can't access the raised hand. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, Mr. Schroder, if you could please state your name and city residence and please go ahead.
Hi, Dick Schroder, seven hundred block of Lake Point. Three hundred sixty seven days ago. Lady by the name of Kelly Rembert. Sent you guys an email. Saying that she was concerned about flooding and. She was concerned about sewers. That was a year and two days ago. And now I'm watching this and I see Councilmember Fluid and McConnell. Tried to slow roll some sort of way to get an emergency relief valve in, I think. I think Councilman McConnell wants to have people go door to door. How many more three hundred sixty seven days are going to go by before you guys can actually make a decision on that? Seems like you guys could do a little better as far as getting. Getting things going because, you know, it's it's over a year and now you decide you want to maybe go door to door. I mean, that's. That's a ridiculous waste of time. How many more millions of dollars will we be taking out of our house and throwing it on the front lawn, waiting for garbage? Three weeks later with rats and stink all over our neighborhood because you people want to just just think the hell out of this. You know, I I don't, I don't trust Great Lakes Water Authority to do their job. They've already proven to me they're not going to. So we better do things on our own. And why don't we just do what a smart person like Candace Miller did? She can figure out how to dump water into the lake. You know, I'm sure we're going to treat it somehow, but when you guys want to go back five years to find out who owns. Who owns some land in Detroit because you guys want to get together out on the side. We had two city councilmen prove. That they're that they're colluding with each other and doing city business outside of this, which is an Opens Meeting Act violation. And I hope Jake Hollit, which you just saw that these people are doing. I don't know how much more evidence you need that these people are all getting together on the side and doing city business. So how about you do a little city business and give us a a storm drain that we can flip a valve and keep this garbage out of our basements. Within three hundred sixty seven days. Thank you.
I think you're muted, City Manager.
All right, Mayor Danner, I have no more public comment.
Okay, thank you. Without a close public comment, non agenda items. The administration has asked for a closed door session. Personnel evaluation and they have also had because. A personnel evaluation and they have also, uh, because of, uh, recent developments, asked that we also include closed-door discussion regarding, uh, uh, litigation matters, which is also, uh, within the purview of closed-door sessions. Um, I think we need a motion of counsel to, uh, facilitate the closed doors. Is that correct, uh, City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, I move that, uh, we provide a closed-door session for consideration of personnel evaluation and litigation matters.
Support.
Uh, call the roll, please.
So, Member Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Padgett.
Yes.
Rappson.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Uh, yes, motion passes. We will have a closed door. Um, for the public's information, um, we were, we are going to go into, I believe, we'll, we'll, we'll test the city manager's technical prowess here to put us into a, uh, a sub, subgroup room. Um, we will return to, uh, open session at the conclusion of the closed door, however long that takes. Um, before we adjourn, and if there is a vote, the vote will occur in the open session. With that, um, I'm going to ask the administration to facilitate our ability to get into a closed door.
We are back in open session and closed door session had been has been closed. We have I have one motion for the for the council to consider and that is to direct the city manager to act as advised by our labor attorney. Is there support for that?
For it.
Call the roll please.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Jim, you're muted.
Robson.
Yes.
Got it.
Louis?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Ah yes, motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
But lots of simultaneous pick pick anybody there there councilmember McConnell moved and pick almost anybody to second it, I guess. Signify here signify all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or hearing none, motion passes. We are in adjourned. We are adjourned. It is 12 o'clock. Oh, we just hit 12:01. We almost made it today. Thank you, council. Long meeting, but a lot of great city business was conducted. Take care.
Bye.
Good night.
Night everyone.